For the city council committee, for the city council meeting.
Oh, I wish I could do that.
Councillor Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Liberty LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
President Ponti? If everybody in this chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you and a salute to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. Councillor in seat seven, Consul Appelletier?
Mr. President, I would like to ask that we take item fifteen out of order.
Motion to take items fif- item fifteen out of order has been made by Consul-
Because Mr. Lederman's here from Chelsea and Mary Sahadi-
Noted.
-had asked them both to show up tonight.
No problem.
And I feel kinda bad because he misses supper.
No worries.
I'll second it.
Motion to take items fifteen has been made by Consul Appelletier, seconded by Consul Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to waive the rules?
Motion to waive the rules.
To have Mr. Lederman, Thomas, come down? And if Attorney Rumsey, who is here, wants to speak on this as well. This is the sale of the former police station located at 158 Bedford Street to Weatherfield LLC, as well as the individual for the real estate who's here representing the LLC as well. I'd like to acknowledge Consul in seat three, Consul Kilby first.
Well, I guess after a little premature with calling it, Mr. President, after this, I would ask we take forty-nine. I'll label it forty-nine. It's after the agenda so we can have Mr. Pacheco.
Yep, we'll get that done, for sure.
Thank you.
For sure. Do you have questions on this, Consul, or no?
No, thanks.
I do got a couple of quick questions, if I may. Attorney Thomas, before I do, sir, if you could just please introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Mark Lederman. I am the potential purchaser of the old Bedford Street Police Station.
Before we continue, there was a motion to waive the rules. Is there-
Yeah, I did. There was.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Sir, you could just speak right into my-
Sure. My name is Mark Lederman. I am the potential purchaser of the old Bedford Street Police Station. My company, Weatherfield LLC, I'm the owner and manager.
Thank you very much. And I know you had the opportunity to present yourself to the Real Estate Committee that is chaired by Consul Appelletier, and thank you for your presentation, which is the purpose of that. I got a couple of questions for Attorney Thomas, if I may. Attorney Thomas, in the purchase and sales agreement for 158 Bedford Street, there is a section on title that is in Section 7A. Obviously, the buyer is assuming the responsibility of paying for his own title work to be done. Has any preliminary title work been started there? And do you foresee any issues that are clouding title that would prohibit the sale from happening?
Mr. President, I don't believe there is. What's different about this parcel than a typical tax possession is that on a typical tax possession, we have a decree from the land court.
Right.
I've had a conversation with Attorney O'Neill, who represents Mr. Lederman, and the basis of the city's title in this particular parcel is a deed in lieu of foreclosure. So, we actually got a deed back-
Okay.
...from the entity. So, with the exception of the encumbrances that had been put on in the interim between the time the city owned it and the time the city reacquired it, the title is pretty clear on this.
Okay. In addition, I see the time for performance for delivery of deed as a closing. While I recognize that it says "on" or "before" at 10:00 a.m. on the 31st of December 2020, whereas it's an "as-is" sale, where is no conditions and all responsibilities on warranties and representations fall on the buyer's side, why such a long closing period?
There is one contingency, and that contingency is to allow Mr. Lederman to get prospective purchaser status. The police station is a brownfield, so there was contamination there. If Mr. Lederman buys it without getting prospective purchaser status, he will be in the chain of liability. If, on the other hand, he goes through a process that should take about two months of hiring an LSP, a licensed site professional, to do an all-appropriate inquiry on the parcel and give him a prospective purchaser letter, he will no longer, he will not be in the chain of liability and may be able to access some public funds to help do some of the cleanup parts. But in any case, the most important part is, he won't be liable.
Yeah, okay. And I recognize that the city also will be held harmless with the-
Yes.
-LSP and the prospective purchaser status as well, right?
Well, actually, the city is-
Just a point of information. It's city property, so we're the ones that-
So, the prob- I was gonna answer that, yeah. The problem is, the city is in the chain of liability, and that's because when it was owned by the city as a police station-
Still is.
-when it was owned as a police station, there were certain activities taking place there. Because of those activities that took place, the city is in the chain of liability. On the other hand, when the city acquired it back as a tax possession, the city is not in the chain of liability on any tax possessions by law. However, because this was formerly a city-owned property that we acquired back as a tax possession, we are in the chain of liability, and that's actually what's prevented the city in the past from accessing some public dollars to address the site.
Okay.
Was that your point?
Yeah.
Yeah. I recognize also in the transfer section of the contract where it says deed restrictions, I see that there's a four-year window that is incorporated into the transfer. Are you preparing a specific deed restriction to be recorded at the registry of deed closing?
Yes.
And has that been prepared yet by the attorneys?
No.
I know it's early because the closing isn't-
No, it hasn't. There are two provisions in here. One is the four-year, where if Mr. Lederman goes to convey it within four years of conveyance to him, the city has to approve. That's very similar to what you typically find in redevelopment authority deeds generally.
Right.
The second provision is, if at any point within ten years of the conveyance to Mr. Lederman, this property is conveyed to a nonprofit, that nonprofit has to execute a payment in lieu of taxes to the city to re- before that conveyance can happen. So, I will be preparing those. That'll happen during the next couple of months. What typically has happened in this process is I've done the first drafts, I've sent them to the Law Department, gotten their input, and then sent it over to Attorney O'Neill. I've got two raw drafts done of the restrictions, but I was holding off doing that until the purchase and sale agreement had been signed.
Those are really all my questions. I also want to just take two points of acknowledgement, too. First, I know Consular in seat seven, Consul Appelletier, has worked extremely hard behind the scenes on this item specifically. I know you also work with the mayor to try to spearhead and try to get this back on the city tax roll. So, I acknowledge, I want to take a moment to acknowledge your work in trying to put this, put this together.
I appreciate it, Mr. President. You know, after twenty-three years, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, and I just don't want to make sure that light shuts off and then we end up with the building back again. I've got confidence in Mr. Thomas, he's done a good job getting the paperwork done. And Mr. Lederman is a perfect gentleman as far as I'm concerned. He come down with his son at the last meeting, and, you know, I don't know if he's ready to go, but he's certainly got a big package there with some kind of material to show what he's gonna do.
That's a point on the table.
In its time. I mean, this is a dead end. This is it. Because I talked to the mayor, and I says, if we don't do something, that's it. We're gonna have to do something with the building. And we got somebody that come forward, seems to be a genuine guy. He's got a good reputation. He's got a good business. He's got half the equipment that he needs to do the project already, and he just needs, you know, the title and the paperwork to be done right. And Mr. Thomas done a good job, and I believe the Corporation Council as well has done some work on this. And I think we're ready to go. I mean, my colleagues know, you know, the mayor knows what we went through. This is it. I hope this is it. I hope you're the guy with that idea.
Thank you. What are you looking at, sir, for an estimated construction cost to rehabilitate this into a thirty-plus unit residential complex?
So, we don't quite have architectural plans. It's actually what we're gonna be working on in the, as well as the site, so we're a little bit loose on our budget, but we're probably be looking at a five to six million dollar development.
And you're expecting market rate housing for thirty-plus units?
That's correct.
Okay. Any residential, any commercial component to it, or is it strictly residential?
Strictly residential.
Okay.
Once we work through the architectural, we have to really see how it's gonna lend with maintaining the facade, windows, in the architectural historic detail, but the RFP is really calling for the thirty residential units.
And my last question to you is, ballpark estimated time for completion of the construction phase for residential renting?
I mean, this is all part of the, you know, RFP and the deed. You know, we're looking at about a year, a year and a half once we get going.
Bunch of clothes. Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Consul in seat five, Consul Lee.
Hello, sir. Once again, I also have the pleasure of serving on the Real Estate Subcommittee with Consul Appelletier and Consul Kilby. And I know in that meeting, I appreciate the fact that you answered pretty much all my questions regarding the process that you had to go through for vetting and things like that. Just a couple of questions that I did have regarding that. You mentioned something about a central register. Would you be able to elaborate more on what that is and, you know, how that process goes through?
The Commonwealth of Massachusetts maintains a central register, which years ago used to actually be a publication that they would come out. Now, a lot of it is done online, and it is where all cities and towns post, and the state posts, the sale of goods and services, the acquisition of goods and services. And it's maintained, and it's maintained in a way that people know that if they're looking for property, that's where they look. If they're looking to provide services, that's where they go to look.
Now, can that be accessed through the mass.gov website?
Online, yes.
Okay, all right. The reason why I asked about that is, there was specific people asking me about that. I guess they didn't hear about that, so now we have the option to look for that online. Regarding your property, and this is just me asking you to consider the preference for veterans when the time comes to open up those units?
Absolutely.
That you have some preferences for veterans in that context as well?
Again, absolutely.
Okay, I appreciate that. And with that, I yield, I had, we had multiple questions at the Subcommittee meeting, so I'm good with that.
And I'd like to recognize that, too. The Real Estate Committee did a phenomenal job with doing the vetting, so thank you for that. Any further questions on this? Consul in seat eight, Consul Pereira.
Yeah, the only question I have, Mr. Thomas, they've never done an environmental study on this building?
No, they've done two, as a matter of fact. The city had a hazmat study done-
Right.
-and the city had a Phase One done. Now, what has to happen is, his licensed site professional will look at those two reports and determine if additional reporting has to be, additional investigation has to be done. And then the licensed site professional will issue a letter which states that the licensed site professional has completed what's known as an all-appropriate inquiry. Once he gets that, he will then have prospective purchaser status.
But that was my, that was gonna be my question. I thought we had done some environmental studies there-
You had done that on purpose, yeah.
-and he will get those, Mr. Lederman will get those-
He already has those.
-as well to look at.
Yeah.
And I did, I'm not on the Real Estate Committee, but I did watch it at home. I tend to watch meetings. And I did hear you talking about the parking situation there and having parking maybe on the first floor or looking at other places around there that would avail parking to tenants. There's also a house behind that that has kinda, you might want to look into it. It's been empty for a long time. I believe it was a dentist that was there. But there's one strip of land between the police station and that home that belongs to the Recreation Department, because when they had prisoners in the jail cell and they had to walk them across to court, the state owned that one strip of land. You might want to look into that, because maybe there's something that you can do.
Originally, when we were looking at the property-
Right.
-we were hopeful that that piece of property was part of the building-
Yeah.
-but apparently it belongs to the Recreation Center.
Right. Just the strip of land.
Just the strip.
Just the strip of land from the back of the police station. There's a strip of land that goes from the back of the police across-
It's about ten feet wide and then goes into a little parking lot.
Yes, just, just that ten feet wide part. It's not even the parking lot.
Okay.
It's just that, just so where they could walk the prisoners into the courthouse. But the house behind it has been there for a while, empty. You may want to look into that. That might give you something. All I can tell you is, I do know that somebody else had wanted to purchase it but was told by the former administration that the parking lot across the street they could get, and they could get this house and knock it down, and that was not true.
Right.
Because the house was owned by somebody else, and there was that strip of land, and the parking lot across the street is not owned by the city. So, but that's how I know about the other pieces that came, because I had met with that gentleman at that time. All I can tell you, sir, is I wish you the best of luck to do a great project. I don't know what you have there, but is that a rendering of what you propose to do?
These are the early nineteen-hundred existing-
Plans?
The real old blueprints. I don't want to open them, 'cause they're gonna fall apart.
From original, from the-
The original from, yeah, Tammy pulled those out for me-
Oh, oh.
-so we can get a little bit of a head start on the measurements and the-
Good.
-existing conditions.
Well, sir, I wish you well.
Thank you.
Do a good job for Flow River, and we treat people well here, so good luck.
Thank you.
Much success to you and to your son. Thank you. With that, I yield.
And just to Consul in seat eight's point, there is a building that is behind the police station that has been for sale for twelve, fifteen years. It has been condemned by the building inspector. It is not in livable condition in any way, shape, or form, so I'm sure your attorney would be able to make proper contacts with the individuals who own that building, I'm sure, through the help of the city. So, if you want to pursue that as an avenue for additional parking, I'm sure it's something that you could pursue.
That would be great. I'll definitely look into that. Thank you.
Have your attorney reach out to Attorney Thomas or Attorney Rumsey, Corporation Council, and they might be able to guide you in who those contacts would be. Is there a motion to adopt the order?
Motion to adopt.
Consul in seat three.
Comment, vote. May I?
Yes, Consul in seat three.
Also, as a member of the Real Estate Committee, I just feel like I want to mention that Ms. Sahadi was down here and some other of the department heads, and they, what was nice is they assured you and Attorney Thomas complete cooperation in terms of anything that any of these officers in City Hall can do to answer any of your questions or to work with you to get this project done. They're gonna be here for you, so I want to see that.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and hopefully it'll pass, and good luck.
Thank you.
Consul in seat one, Consul Kadeem.
Thank you. Attorney Thomas, can you just elaborate a little bit more on the letter that he needs to receive? What exactly is the LSP gonna testify to?
So, basically, what happens is, under both the federal and the state environmental laws, there is something known as the all-appropriate inquiry, and it's about a page long, and it's looking at environmental reports that were done, looking at the history of the property, looking at uses, doing a site visit. Once you have a licensed site professional do that, they will then submit a letter. And when they submit the letter to the person, that person can then buy the property, and they're buying it having done an all-appropriate inquiry. So that in the future, their obligation is to try to address the contamination as best as they can as part of their redevelopment, but they are not liable for the cost per se. And what they'll be able to do is access possibly, EPA has grant money, Mass Development has grant money, that are all meant to be pre-development dollars and things like that. When the city went and did the hazmat study that was done in the Phase One, it was to basically front-load the ability in the future for an LSP to do this. But that's what the all-appropriate inquiry letter would do.
So, how does that remove the liability for him?
By law.
Just by identifying what the exact, actual contaminations were, and that he didn't create any additional contaminations?
Exactly, and it's basically by, under Chapter 20, 20, there's a specific section that will then exempt him out of the chain of liability the same way that the city is exempted out when involuntarily acquires a tax possession.
Yep.
So, it's by law that it happens.
All right. Do we have any more brownfield grants for the city? Has that kinda dried up?
I'm not really sure. I know that there was, I believe there was a little bit left on the one that had been secured many years ago.
Yep.
I don't know what happened with that. That was being pretty much handled by Mrs. Viveras, so I've been out of the loop on those funds for a while now.
All right. I actually thought you were coming down for a boutique hotel, 'cause that's what we were promised, that location, but, you know.
I wish I could.
Thirty apartments is good, too. You know, I read that in the Herald News one time by this used car salesman. But in terms of the thirty units, are you gonna be looking for historic tax credits?
We'll be looking into that as well.
Okay, so is your project, and I'm just concerned about the feasibility of the project itself, and obviously, I'm sure, I haven't read the entire contract, but there's probably a reverter clause associated with everything, and-
Just to res-
-even outside of the tax credits, is this a project that you feel is feasible? Or is this predicated on you receiving the historic tax credits?
No, no. What's really going to determine is if we can physically fit the units within the structure.
Yep.
And based on the square footage and the window layout, again, as far as egress windows, I think we can do it. We're gonna have to get a little creative, maybe loft-style apartments on the top floors, twenty-foot ceilings and whatnot, what's going on on the top floor. So, we have to get a little creative with the architecture, which is gonna be one of our, you know, next steps and part of our due diligence in making sure that we can actually fit what we need to fit in there. Our goal is to keep the facade of the building and keep the windows and keep it looking as historically and architecturally intact as possible. Perhaps we may have to cut a few windows in, maybe in the back, make some, you know, do something for the venting of the new heating systems, but again, hopefully that will be small and won't really affect the facade too much.
Yep.
But our intention is to try to keep the envelope of the building intact as much as possible.
So, are you, are you going in there with the thirty apartments as what you really need to make this-
Pretty much, yeah.
-a feasible project?
Yeah. I mean, if we can fit more-
No, no, I recognize that. I'm just trying to-
We'll try, but again-
Without, without me asking what your break-even point is in terms of apartments, I figured the feasibility in terms of profit and everything else is the thirty apartments that you're looking for.
Yeah. Now, again, if I can get more in and we can, you know, do that without, you know, destroying the facade of the building and going up another two stories, you know, we're gonna try to keep everything within the existing envelope.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, the property is also located in the Housing Development Improvement District, and so Mr. Lederman would be entitled to apply for a tax increment exemption on the residential portion-
Yep.
-of the project.
Okay, great. With that, I yield.
Any further questions? Consul in seat seven, Consul Appelletier. Show your hand that time.
Many years ago, we had, his name was Tony Codaro, interested in the building, he was gonna spend about five million dollars, and I talked to Mr. Codaro about you, and I asked him if he could possibly sit down with you one day and go over what he was gonna do, 'cause he had some pocket in there. Maybe that could help you out, and he would, I said, "For the betterment of the city, Tony, if you can talk to this guy, get you guys together, and he could probably help you out a little bit," knowing that he went through what you went through, but because of that administration that we had at the time, they wanted to rebid it. After that, nothing worked. So, I can, I'll get a hold of you.
Get me, get me his contact information.
Yeah.
I'd definitely like to speak with him.
And we'll set up, you can call, I can call him, set something up, and I think you'll find it very informative.
What was this gentleman's name again?
Tony Codaro. He's got an insurance company, and I'll give you a call.
Yeah, we'll get, I just wanted to reference it.
You can take that offline, yep.
All right, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the order?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the order has been made by Consul Kilby, seconded by Consul Appelletier. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, and best of luck to you.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Drive safe.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you. Attorney, Consul in seat three, Consul Kilby, you have a motion to take a specific item out of order?
Yes, the item that's left on the agenda, so we can release whoever you-
That's item number?
I would label it forty-nine. It's the, with regard to the special ed transportation.
Is it, the motion to take the other potential matters before the counsel, which is this transportation contract, has been made by Consul Kilby, seconded by Consul Appelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the order has been made by Consul Kilby. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Consul Appelletier. Discussion. Consular in seat one, Consul Kadeem.
Mr. President, you had one job, one job. That was it. Killed me.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Can I make an amendment that we approve the contract for the five-year term and the amount of $2,603,982 with each subsequent year to be increased by a CPI?
With each subsequent year? To be increased by the-
CPI.
CPI.
Adjustment.
That motion has been made by Consul Kadeem to approve.
Second.
This is the amendment?
Amendment.
The amendment. Motion to approve the amendment has been made by Consul Kadeem, seconded by Consul Dion. Discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt as amended?
Motion to adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended has been made by Consul Kadeem, seconded by Consul Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Paul Seb, Mr. Pacheco? Madam Clerk?
You have the mayor's letter and proposed FY21 municipal budget?
Is there a motion to refer to finance?
Motion to refer to finance.
Motion to refer to finance has been made by Consul Pereira, seconded by Consul Dion. Discussion. Consul in seat one, Consul Kadeem.
Mr. President, just in terms, you know, I had some conversations with the administration. I happened to watch the school committee meeting last night, and I think they were taken aback by the fact that their percentage in net school spending was at ninety-eight percent versus a hundred, so I don't think that was clearly communicated to the school committee. But in those conversations and, and discussions, there was mention about coming together and, and some committee members were a little upset with the fact that we haven't had the meeting that is required by the, the charter for the, for the three, I guess, bodies, governmental bodies to get together to really kind of have these conversations. I, I think, to quote one committee member, I think he was trying to quote a, a movie, Cool Hand Luke, which I, I did watch. He obviously did not watch. But we have a failure to communicate. I tend to agree. I, I, I think we need to, and we've, we've said this. You know, from my standpoint, we should have been talking about this three months ago and, and had it, but, you know, at what point are we gonna have this joint meeting?
Joint meeting.
I mean, we've, we've got, we've got meetings already scheduled for the budget in two weeks, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And so
Sure, Counselor, so.
Are we just gonna, are we gonna pigeonhole a, a quick conversation with the school committee and?
So, Counselor, we, we tried to, the council, at least from my perspective, was trying to schedule this meeting some time ago. The mayor took the position that it is the mayor who calls the special meeting and decided that he did not want to call that special meeting. So we have already, expecting a question like this in, in anticipation, I've asked the clerk's office to reach out to the school committee, which they've done over the last couple of days, to try to schedule that meeting with the school committee, in hopes that the chairman of the school committee will call this joint meeting. I can't call it, I've been told. That is, the mayor by charter calls the meeting.
I recognize that. I just, I'm just, you know, I'm not, I'm not putting on you. I'm just, I'm just saying that we, we've now got a budget. Two weeks, we've got meetings that are scheduled and I, I think the assumption is that we're getting together and we're gonna approve a budget and we haven't even had a conversation. We don't know what the school committee stance is on, on net school spending and things of that nature and, you know, where they stand financially, so I, I think those conversations need to be had, at least as one counselor, you know. And we may not all agree with where it is and ninety-eight percent is maybe where we need to be or have to be, not where we choose to be, but I, I think we need to have those conversations with the respective body and really kind of get their input and listen to the superintendent and leadership on that side. I just, again, I mean, we're at the eleventh hour at this point.
I agree. Madam Clerk, if you could please send a communication to the school committee, as well as the mayor, again, in hopes that we could schedule this joint meeting. If we have to call a, another meeting prior to our budget deliberations, we can, or we can nail it out at the first night and kind of do it all at once, but that meeting needs to occur.
Mr. President, I did get a response from the secretary to the school committee. She has reached out to the members regarding their availability and I don't think the mayor's opposed to calling that meeting. We're just waiting to hear back on their availability.
Fair enough.
Did you give her a date?
We, we.
The week of the budget meeting.
The week of the budgets, yeah.
Well, you have a meeting a week from Monday. The public hearing could be on that date as well.
It would, it would probably be in our best interest to have that meeting first before we get into our big budget book.
Right.
And, and, and just so you know, if school committee members are here and we are under these same guidelines and restrictions, it will be closed to the public, these meetings, and we're gonna have to set up school committee members in seats in the gallery to practice social distancing. So we're already working on that as well.
Great.
You still have the floor, Counselor in seat one.
Oh, thank you. The only other comment I'll, I'll make is, is that to that committee member, if he went to Bishop's Stank, he would have watched Cool Hand Luke in, in English class. Clearly, he went to Bishop Conley. You know, that's, that's the issue at hand, so with that, you know. I'll, I'll let that rest.
Motion to refer to finance has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item two is the mayor's communication in an order establishing the spending limits of revolving funds for FY twenty-one.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So made.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
Yeah, I just wanna know how they come up with these figures. How do we come up with, with these amounts that they can't, that this is what they're able to spend?
Can I get just a point of information?
Counselor in seat one.
It's my understanding on the Municipal Modernization Act, I don't believe you need to come back before us every single time. It's just when there's a change to the limit or you're creating a new revolving count. Is that not accurate?
I'm not sure, Counselor.
You wanna?
The city auditor prepared this. I didn't realize it came down to you, so I haven't researched it.
Is the council ready to approve it? I, I would just, I mean, for your own, for the, for the city's sake of streamline. I think that was one of the concerns with the Modernization Act, was trying to streamline some of the processes. So I don't, I don't think you necessarily need to come back before us unless you're making an, an update to the spending limits and what they're being used for, for the revolving accounts every single year, or you're just creating a new one. I, I think it's an automatic approval from the council, as long as there's been no change from the prior year, so.
So I would have to check with the city auditor and the departments whose funding are affected by these revolving funds to determine that none of them have changed from the prior year. I am not familiar with whether they have or haven't.
Which means, and, and that also includes the spending limits, right? So we, we approve the revolving accounts and the limits that they're allowed to, to spend on a given year.
If the council wants, if the council wants to adopt it or refer it to finance, it's up to you. I mean, there was a motion on the floor to adopt, so.
No, I don't, I don't really think there's any huge amounts here for, but like trolley and handicap buses, forty thousand for community maintenance. Well, I haven't seen a trolley all year. Are we gonna get one next year? Why am I spending forty thousand dollars? Is that only gonna be for a handicap bus? I'm just.
These are spending limits, though.
You know, is this what they spent last year? We can just table it and bring it up next time.
We can refer it to the Committee on Finance if you'd like, and we can have a discussion in Finance.
Or, I mean, or we just waive the rules and just have a quick conversation now.
It's the same thing as it was last year.
If you want to waive the rules, I, I don't know if you're prepared to have that conversation now.
I think some, I think some of them are just easy responses to.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
Is there a motion to waive the rules?
No, refer to finance.
Second.
Refer it to Finance.
Is there a motion to waive?
Mrs. Ahadi just said she didn't even know it came down here.
Right.
So why are you gonna put her on the spot to answer questions?
Motion to refer to Finance has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion on the referral to Finance. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next order of business.
You gave me the steps.
A communication from the mayor and a proposed ordinance regarding the Butters Lot Program.
Is there a motion?
Refer to the ordinance committee?
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Counselor in seat four, Counselor Vice President LaBeau.
Yep, this item is also on our agenda for Thursday evening.
This is on your agenda for Thursday?
Yep, the resolution put in by Counselor Dion.
Fair enough. A motion to refer to ordinance has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number four is a communication from the mayor and a proposed ordinance amending the executive administrative assistant to the police chief's salary.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number five A is the appropriation order from the Community Preservation Act funds for FY twenty-twenty-one community projects.
Madam Clerk, it would probably be appropriate to take these items individually. Actually, we have to. So if we can read each item individually and the council has the ability to reduce, reject, or approve each of the specific allocations that report to your appropriation order. Is there a motion?
Motion to me.
Madam Clerk, if you can introduce, before the motion, if you can introduce the item individually, please.
Sure. We have the allocation for open space recreation by a reserve conservation land acquisition public in the amount of fifty-four thousand nine hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
I have a question.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
Well, I was gonna make a motion to table, 'cause I don't want to vote on this till I see where the land is. And we don't have that and he didn't have that here. So I make a motion to table.
Motion to table the item has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. There's no discussion on a motion to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have bonds. We have year-three Mount Hope Bike Path, sixty thousand dollars.
Motion to adopt year-three Mount Hope Bike Path public has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have year-two bio reserve project land acquisition public, seventy-eight thousand.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kilby and adopt, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Under historic preservation, we have the Maritime Museum, private nonprofit, one hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Lafayette Durfee House, private nonprofit, one hundred thirty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the Lafayette Durfee House has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The floor of the School Department, public, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Preserving Water Department documents, public, thirty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Water Street, private, twenty-two thousand.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And we have the Bank Street Amory, public, fifty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, I'd like to offer another motion.
Counselor in seat one?
That, the motion I'd like to put forth is that we approve the Adams House project at a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, which would add the subtotal to the historic preservation of seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And I'd ask that the council approve that and refer it back to the committee, the Conservation, Community Preservation Committee, for their reconsideration of their original proposal.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pereira to refer the, approve the Adams House in the sum of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That would fall under historic preservation, has been made and seconded by Counselor Kadim. Discussion on the item. Roll call. As a, before we do the roll call, as a point of information, I'm not quite sure if we're able to amend this appropriation order at this point, so there's, it's not going to be in the appropriation order that is before us. We're gonna have to have a supplemental appropriation order come down from the administration, CPC, after they approve. Just so the council's aware. Correct?
Uh, so, so point of, point of information, what's the, I don't know, I don't have the appropriation in front of me.
The appropriation order five A in our packet.
So they only, yeah, I mean, they're gonna have to come back for
They're gonna have to come back after.
Appropriation, yeah.
Well, CPC is gonna need to approve it again and then come back to us.
My, my take on that anyways is that they should be putting the ten percent for each community of the four, the four categories and if, whether or not they spend it that year, they, they, it builds up a reserve so that they have some additional ones. That's just my take from.
And I agree. Madam Clerk, if you could just make sure you send a communication over to the respective parties to work on a supplemental appropriation order for the council specifically on this item, if it so passes. So we can have this discussion again, so there's no issues on funding.
Okay.
Okay? The motion has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lala Be LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Abstain.
So, Mr. President, just a point of information, just to clarify for my colleagues. So when the CPA allows us to put into specific categories, we're allowed to put ten percent into each category. What communities typically do is just automatically appropriate the ten percent into those categories. They don't necessarily spend the ten percent, but they have it available to them every single year and whatever's not used that year is just, remains in there as a, a reserve fund for that specific category. So that in any given year, if they have a little bit more, they can pull it, they can use that in that particular category, so. I would just ask that, you know, going forward, and it also allows them to look at other projects throughout the year that may come up that they didn't necessarily anticipate, that the appropriation is there, and then all we're really doing is just approving the projects.
Thank you, Counselor.
Continue on. We have community housing, seventy-seven Freedom Street, private, thirty-one thousand, two hundred fifty dollars.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Lee. Discussion. Roll call.
On approval, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lala Be LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
No.
We have administrative, forty-five thousand.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve the administrative component has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And that would be all of the projects, Mr. President.
Okay, so now we have an appropriation order that is before us, ordered that FY twenty-one appropriations be provided through Community Preservation Act CPA revenues and reserves under the MGL Chapter forty-four B, Section four to seven. They're broken down in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-one, one fifty. We're gonna, we can, we're gonna need to, since item number one was tabled by the council, that falls under for CPA open space outdoor projects, we need to reduce that item by fifty-four nine. I, I feel that it would be appropriate to do so, so we can be in conformance with our vote to table that specific item. So the appropriation, I would probably be appropriate to do that, unless there's some disagreement.
I, I gotta.
Counselor in seat one?
Just a disagreement. Why, why do you, why are you reducing the appropriation?
We have it tabled before us. I mean, we could continue with the appropriation, but we table.
What do we have tabled? Do we, do we table the project or do we table the?
We tabled the, the amount.
Well, that, that's fine. I, we, so, again, I, I don't think that we need to table the appropriation. So the appropriation is not predicated on, on the project coming before us. So, so the city council approves two items. City council is taking a vote on the appropriation each year into the various categories based on the CPA monies. That doesn't mean we have to have a project. We can go a full year without any projects, but we still have to appropriate the monies that are coming in that year to the various categories. Okay, so that's one vote that has nothing to do with all the projects. The other vote that the city council is required to do is to vote on specific projects, which we just did. We tabled a specific project. That project cannot go forward because the city council has not adopted that project to move forward. So we don't need to reduce, we don't need to reduce the appropriation.
Fair enough. I stand corrected then, because that money could stay in that appropriation line item for an entire year.
Correct. It doesn't need to be used.
Thank you for that information. I appreciate it, Counselor. Madam Clerk.
Voted that eight thousand, excuse me, eight hundred seventy-one thousand, one hundred fifty dollars be appropriated from CPA fund FY twenty-one annual revenues. Forty-five thousand, a total of forty-five thousand for CPA administrative expenditures, total of one hundred ninety-two thousand nine hundred for CPA open space outdoor recreation projects, total of six hundred two thousand for CPA historic resources preservation projects, and a total of thirty-one thousand, two hundred fifty dollars for CPA housing projects.
So motion to adopt the appropriation order?
So moved.
Motion to adopt the appropriation has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next item before you is the communication from the mayor in an order regarding the deed in lieu of, in lieu of foreclosure received in, from Sandra Griot on lot G zero-three dash zero-zero-eight-six at forty-five William Street.
Motion to adopt the order?
Motion to adopt the order has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
I have, I have a question on it.
Counselor in seat eight, your, your question?
What happens to this property now? She gave a quick claim deed to the city of Fall River. So we own this parcel of property now?
Uh, deed in lieu of foreclosure, if it was given to the city, yes, it is. That is correct.
So, uh, could I, could we ask Mr. Thomas? Could we waive the rules and ask Mr. Thomas about this?
Is there a motion to waive the rules? That's been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Attorney Thomas?
Attorney Thomas, this woman gave a parcel, a house on William Street to the city in lieu of taxes, whatever. She gave us a quick claim deed.
Yes.
So what do we do now with this?
It's a tax possession. No, it's a tax possession. She owed the city, there were about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand of unpaid taxes on this.
Okay.
We were in foreclosure. Rather than finish the foreclosure under the law, under Chapter sixty, she can deed it to us in lieu of foreclosure and it's treated as a tax possession. But it has to be approved by the city council. So she signed the deed, gave it to us. Now we're before the council, so the council can approve it. Once they do, it becomes a tax possession.
Right. And what are we gonna do with it?
Sell it.
We're gonna sell it. We have to sell it for at least a hundred and thirty-eight thousand to make our money for the taxes owed, if not more.
My understanding is it's a vacant parcel now. The building's been demolished. So we most likely will not make that back on it.
So forty-five, the William Street, that, that property is no longer there? That house is not there?
My understanding is that's a vacant, my understanding is that's a vacant piece of property now.
Well, what, what do you mean, it's your understanding? I looked on Patriots. I see a house. You're, why did the house get knocked down? I, I don't understand this. So you're not gonna get a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for a piece of flawed land?
Right, but this is no different, Counselor. This is, this is not a matter of how much we're gonna get for it. It's a matter of, if we had gotten a foreclosure on it, we would have gotten a decree. By, instead of do, going through the process and getting the decree and getting the deed in lieu, it comes in as a tax possession and we don't have to go through the entire process.
I understand that.
Now, at that point, we have, we have twenty-nine tax possessions right now. This'll make thirty. We're in the process right now of reviewing them with the planning department and other departments to see what's appropriate to sell. We would be putting out an auction probably mid-October on this. But it's not a matter of, is it a good deal for us or not, because
It just saved you the time from going through.
It saved the city.
The city, right.
The time from finishing. And as with any tax possession, we always look to sell it for as much as we can. On this particular parcel, seventy-eight thousand dollars of that amount that's outstanding is actually interest. So when you take that out of it, it's about sixty thousand dollars that's remaining. There's a better chance of recouping that than, than the hundred and thirty-eight.
Do you know why the land became vacant? Was there a fire? Was there some?
Her understanding was that the bank had foreclosed on it, but the bank never foreclosed. So she had thought that she had given it back to the bank. The bank disclaimed their interest in it and so she still had it, didn't realize, she claimed she didn't realize she still had it. She lives in Florida. She moved away from Fall River.
And was there a fire?
My understanding is, yes, there was a fire and that's what led to the demolition
All right.
of it. So it, it interests me that you say that you looked on Zillow and it says it's there because my understanding is it's a vacant piece of property.
No, I looked on Patriots property, not Zillow. Patriots property on our website.
That may be an old picture.
And it wasn't there?
That may be an old picture.
Yeah, they didn't have the picture of my, one of the houses I have. They didn't have the picture either.
So I wouldn't rely on that right now.
All right, I just wanted to know, all of a sudden. And how many did you say we have?
We have twenty-nine tax possessions.
And this one makes thirty?
This makes thirty. The vast majority of them are, I believe, undersized vacant pieces of property. Some may be wet, some not. We've asked the planning department and, and Glenn Hathaway and George Garcia from GIS to go through, look at the parcels we have, look at what we have on the twenty-nine parcels, see which ones would lend themselves to going out for bid, to sell them, or, or RFP. You know, there were some in there. For example, the police station's in there. Um, there's a parcel up on North Main Street, XO four fifty-two.
Forget that one. I went. You have to go up a dirt road. They've robbed copper pipes out of the house. They've broken all windows.
There's, there's two parcels.
Yeah.
So.
But that one there, forget about it.
But that's not, actually not the parcel I'm talking about. Um, there's also some other parcels. There's also some other parcels, but for the vast, most majority of what we have left is, is small, undersized parcels up around College Park and Chestnut Street, so we have them looking at that.
Thank you. Mr. Deion gets involved in this too, no?
On these, no, no, not on these.
But on some of them, he does.
On sometimes he does, yes. When it's appropriate to bring him in, we try to bring him into it to enhance the ability to redevelop.
How long do you think it's gonna take for you to look at these thirty parcels of property and get some headway on them?
We have a meeting scheduled the first week of September, and we're planning on a-
Good.
On an auction mid-October.
Good, thank you, Attorney Thomas, thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Was there a motion?
Attorney Thomas, there's a couple more questions, but before I continue, is there a lien holder on this property that has been notified?
No, the bank never took it back. She thought the bank had, the bank never had, she walked away from it. The bank basically, the mortgage had been paid off, the bank wrote it off. I don't know, I never got a true story from this woman. I've talked to her a number of times, all I know is that when the land court did the title exam, there's no lien holder. If there was a lien holder, we wouldn't have taken a deed in lieu back.
Noted, thank you. Counselor C. Four, Counsel Vice President.
Just a quick question, who goes out and looks at the buildings or at the property?
That, at what point, ma'am?
When you decide to take it, deed in lieu of foreclosure. I'm just looking on Google Maps and it goes from forty-three to fifty-seven, was it a back building?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
But who, the decision of whether to take it back as a deed in lieu is made purely off of the title side of it. If there are no outstanding liens, if we're the only people who have a lien on it, if they have good title to convey to us, so that it can't be like a probate situation or something like that, we'll take the deed in lieu back, it'll come in as a tax possession, and then we'll deal with it.
It just looks like it's a driveway right now for one of these buildings that it's in between. I yield, thank you.
Counselor C. Seven, Counsel Pelletier.
Oh, go ahead. You want me to go? Go ahead.
If a person, if a couple owns a house-
Yes, ma'am.
And they both pass away-
Right.
And there's no living heirs, how long does it take the city to get something with that property?
The problem with that is if there's no, if both of the couple pass away-
Husband and wife pass away.
And they have no heirs.
No heirs, no will, no heirs.
Then that becomes an unprobated parcel, the land court requires publication. And it's the land court that publishes, and up until COVID, they were getting better at it, but they were still relatively slow on it. COVID has slowed things down radically, because the court is open, but it's not open in person for these types of things. So it can take a couple of years sometimes.
You're kidding.
They make, they make us look for, for the heirs.
That long?
We have to, the, the court, and it's-
Land court isn't quick.
It comes down to protecting due process. The judges that are there at the land court now believe that with the advent of the internet, with the advent of all of these finder apps, you can find anybody and you can find heirs. And so they require us to jump through some substantial hoops to do due diligence searches before they'll allow the publication.
But meanwhile, the neighbors have to live with an empty, two-family house in a nice area of the city, and the city needs to pay to mow the lawn there because the neighbors then complain and people throw trash, and we've gotta wait years for court to do that?
The ability to, the ability-
Do you have Lexics, Lessex and Exsex?
Yes, we do, Lexus Nexus, we have that.
And we can't find her through that?
The ability to maintain the property or to force maintenance of the property is really independent of the tax piece. On the tax piece, because the court is taking away somebody's property ownership-
Yeah.
It's the court's opinion and it's the law in Massachusetts that they'd rather measure twice and cut once and protect somebody from losing their interest in property rather than do this. Now, that's not a popular answer in neighborhoods, I understand that.
Right.
But it's, as they say, it's the same eraser that could erase your own property ownership that is erasing this property ownership, and so the same law applies.
Who does that, Mr. Attorney Thomas? Who would go through the steps of looking for any heirs to this home? Who in the city is responsible with that?
It actually happens in two spots. When we file a case, before we file a case, we have databases that we use, Intellius, we use ancestry.com, we use others, to locate the heirs, because since 2011, we've collected just over nineteen million in past due taxes and just over five and a half million in interest, and we only have twenty-nine tax possessions. So we work the accounts to try to get people to pay. That means there's upfront work that's done. Once the decision is made to foreclose on it, we will finish doing that due diligence, then the land court appoints a land court title examiner to do a title exam. They start at the taking, go twenty years back and then bring it forward, and they identify parties at interest. Through that process, they'll look at probates, they'll look at anything else. They then notify the land court that the city has to follow up on this probate of that or date of this, which we do. As a matter of fact, today, we were looking at, we use newspapers.com, we were looking at newspapers from a long time ago.
So who in the city here?
Right now, it's done by myself and Diane Perry.
Okay.
On tax foreclosure cases.
Well, these people aren't gonna come pay their taxes, but-
Good portion of them do.
Sad, sad situation, thank you.
Counselor C. Seven, Counsel Pelletier.
Well, it's on the same line, I guess, to get rid of the, the properties, how long does it take?
Once we own it, we try to sell it within six months.
Yeah, but, you know, it was a take, we had one of the Highlands there, tried to get knocked down, it took a long time, and the tax title, was it two years, three years, five years?
Uh, uh, right now, the way it's working is a tax title typically runs about two years to two and a half years to run through. Okay, the other thing to keep in mind is every parcel that is not dilap, that is dilapidated or looks abandoned or looks vacant is not necessarily a tax title parcel. There were parcels that are being warehoused by banks, so they'll foreclose on the mortgage, they evict the people, they're not gonna put people back in there because there is a quirk in the, in the funding of the banks that allows them to actually get a better credit if it hasn't been foreclosed. Now, I'm not saying that's why they do that, but when you look at properties, that happens. There is also no law in the Commonwealth that says that if you own a piece of property, you can't board it up and just leave it vacant. The issue becomes in maintaining it according to community standards. And that's why we get a number of calls, oh, this property's owned by the city, or the city's got taxes on it, and we look at it and they're actually current. And at that, we can't really do anything from the tax title side, that's when Faust and, and the building department comes in from that side.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on this item specifically? Just so everybody knows, the land court's extremely backed up with the foreclosure and eviction moratoriums right now, so it's gonna be quite the process to get anything through the land court for quite some time. Is there any other questions regarding this item? Hearing none, the motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Attorney Thomas.
Can we motion to take item seven, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G?
Second.
Sure, we'll take a motion to take all items after reading, has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kilby, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, Madam Clerk. Sir, you can read it and then we'll entertain a motion to confirm all the appointments if necessary.
Sure. Have the mayor requesting the confirmation of the reappointments of Paul Borgers as Deputy Shellfish Constable, Paul Borgers as Assistant Harbor Master, Michael LaMarine as Deputy Shellfish Constable, Michael LaMarine as Assistant Harbor Master, Bob Smith as Shellfish Constable, Jeffrey Solier to the Board of Park Commissioners, and Victor Farias to the Community Preservation Committee.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to confirm all appointments has been made by Counselor Pereira.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kilby, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number eight is a new appointment to the Board of Health, and it's on behalf of Stephanie Perry.
Motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm and approve the appointment has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kilby, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number nine is a request for, to reset a restored World War One memorial plaque at the Veteran Center at seven fifty-five Pine Street.
To adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Deion, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Have a number of recommendations from the Traffic Commission to amend ordinances.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Counselor Pereira. Seconded by Counselor Deion, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Have the city planners communication regarding uncompleted subdivisions?
Motion to refer to finance.
You're gonna refer that to finance for him to come in and talk about it?
Yep, that'd probably be a good idea to do. Motion to refer to finance has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kilby, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Item number twelve is the Corporation Council's legal opinion regarding the Board of Park Commissioners.
Do a job to place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by?
I second.
Sorry, Counselor Pereira, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Just so everybody knows, our Corporation Council is here if there is any other questions on these items specifically. Next item of our business.
Item number thirteen is a communication from the Corporation Council, actual legal opinion regarding attendance at city council meetings.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Kilby, discussion. Counselor C. Seven, Counsel Pelletier.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, well, maybe we get the Corporation Council down here, just one question.
Regarding this item specifically, Counselor? Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Deion, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Attorney Ramsey?
And the question I would ask is, you're the Corporation Council, and you're determining that you don't have to come to the council meeting, it's like, you know, it's a conflict of interest, I mean, you're the legal opinion, but you're doing something saying, hey, I don't have to come to the council meeting, I don't think it should've came from you rather than another entity to, to say, hey, he's right. You get my point? I thought it was a conflict of interest.
Understand your point, I mean, one of the, the basic jobs I have is to interpret the statute, the ordinances, and that's what it is. I mean, I don't think there was anything personal at all in here, it's just an interpretation of what the ordinance says, what the charter says. If the council think it's worth the value of getting an outside opinion on it, I understand your point, it does pertain to me, but I don't think there was anything personal that I added to this, I thought it was a very neutral opinion, it's explaining what, for the most part, it's pretty plain language. You know, there would be a cost of getting an outside counsel, because I don't think Assistant Corporation Counsel, HAWIAC would probably have the same issue that I would have, so it'd have to go outside. But if that's something the council would wanna consider, I understand it.
Well, you, you know, from what I hear in the past, most of my colleagues said you should be here, and then you say, well, my legal opinion, I don't have to be there. And that's the whole thing, I mean, if you guys wanna let it go, so be it. It's just, I think, a conflict of interest, it should've came from somebody else, that's all. I'm not trying to give you a hard time, that's the way I feel.
No, it's fine, I mean, as I said, it's just the interpretation of the statute, there's nothing personal, at least I didn't intend anything to be personal in there. You know, I think I've told you on the side, regardless of what this says, I'm here to assist the, the city council, I'm here to assist with legal issues, I think the, the difference of opinion isn't that I'm not here, it's that I wanna be here with a purpose. There's a legal issue that the city council wants to address as opposed to sit here in case something comes up, I think, you know, notwithstanding what the law says, what the ordinance say, I mean, that's been my personal opinion, that's my personal opinion, which is not in here, which is, I'm glad to help the city council with any legal issue that comes up. I'd like to be prepared for it, I'd like to put it in writing when possible, you know, I've, I've done, have extensive notes on the issues that I'm prepared for as opposed to coming down here and winging it.
All right, well, if my colleagues feel that, that's the way it should be, so be it, but they were complaining that you should be here at any meeting, so-
I heard.
With that, I yield, I'll go with what they say.
Thank you. Counselor C. Five, Counsel Lee.
So I can appreciate the fact that you have a goal, or one of your goals, is to make sure that your position isn't politicized, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
And I, and I feel like I can speak for some of the public opinion over the past several years, not just the past few, but the past several years, where this position has been at least viewed as politicized and viewed as the position works for the mayor more so than the council. I think that's one of the bigger reasons that we've had so many changes over the past few years when it comes to Corporation Council. I don't, I believe in all the communications that you've sent down to us so far, I haven't seen a bias, I haven't seen a bias of you leaning for a mayor over the city council in any way, shape, or form, I think this is, and I think this is strictly based on some of the things where council president has requested for the presence and it just hasn't come up, and I think there's been frustrations from the city council in that respect. And I think this is something that can probably be, probably be rectified pretty easily in the future, where even if, say, like, you did have a very important situation going on where you couldn't be here, and in turn, the council as, almost as a body, had a lot to say about that, because I, I didn't even know the details of the situation. So with that, I apologize and that. But in general, I think if, if, if there is a, if there is a request to come down or a request to be in attendance for some of these meetings, I, I just, I hope in the future that there is that, and if you can't specifically be there, that perhaps the assistant or someone else can be, so we can at least have that presence in these meetings, so.
Fair enough, I, I want you at least to know, I believe that every invitation that I've received, I have communicated with. I'm not sure how the, the failure to communicate here was how all nine of you didn't receive the communication, but I don't believe there's been a single invitation where I've just ignored and haven't responded to.
Okay. That's all I have to say about it, we've, we've been able to, I believe, clear the air a lot on this, so with that, I yield.
Attorney Ramsey, I wanna just make it clear, there's been communication with your office with having you attend meetings and you were unavailable, so I wanna make it clear, like, there's no issues with this council president communicating with the city council in any way, shape, or form regarding anything. So when we've invited you to a couple meetings, you had other commitments, you weren't available, I mean, I didn't send a broad email to every council saying Corporation Council's not attending, I think it's pretty self-explanatory why you weren't here, so there's certainly not a communication issue from my end to this council, at least, I don't believe so. Counselor C. Four, Counsel Vice President LeBeau.
I just have a quick question. Attorney Ramsey, how did you come to be here this evening? Were you requested?
Yes, I was.
For a specific item?
For the Finance Committee, I was specifically requested, I believe it was item number four, but it was the part that was tabled. It was the unfinished subdivisions. As to the, the regular meeting, it just said, see agenda. So not necessarily anything specific. I did read through the agenda, it was lengthy. I have a list of, you know, I think there are 12 things I thought I could be useful for, so I prepared on all 12 of them, some of which we've addressed, some of which, you know, we skimmed over and tabled. I think that's actually a pretty good example. It would've been, it would've been nice to identify what you actually needed me for because a lot of things I've prepared for and I wasn't needed at all.
Consul President, in the past, with former Corporation Council, you used to speak to him on Thursdays or Fridays after we got the agenda.
Usually on a Friday, yep.
Go over it with him and, and see if there was anything. Is that how this happened tonight?
Well, I mean, we, we sent the invitation to Corporation Council. There wasn't, we didn't have a phone call. I mean, I know he, he called me today, we didn't connect. But, I mean, going forward, if it's, if it's the need, we could speak on Friday when the agenda is necessary. The only thing is, I don't know on some items if council is going to have questions. At the, at the last meeting, there was six items that we needed him here for, and the meeting before, we didn't need him at all. So the reality is, at the end of the day, I'll be candid with everybody, okay? We'll, we'll, we'll say how it is. Commitments were made that Corporation Council was going to be at our meeting for our city council meetings when we approved the contract. As council president, invitations were sent to Corporation Council, and he was not available. We have two meetings a month. So I'm saying that invitations will continue because it was represented, that there would be attendance from Corporation Council at our meetings. So there might be issues that, I mean, I, I know one specific item that a council might have a question on tonight regarding the park board. That's probably going to come up, and he might be back down here giving us an opinion on that. But there were representations made that Corporation Council was going to be here for our meetings, and I'm doing what the city council asked me to do, is invite him to our meetings. So I will have no problem with going over what could or could not happen, but I'm only one counselor, and I can't guarantee what discussions may or may not come up.
Agreed.
We talked about so many things.
And can you remind me, while we're on this, was it last year or the year before that we approved our own budget for second opinion or outside opinion? That we've never actually done anything with?
I don't think we had it in our budget last year.
Yeah, you did.
No, we did not.
No, we approved it, but I don't think they put it in.
No.
That's how you did it. No, that was the legal order.
No, no, no. We, we, we had outside legal for the litigation with former Mayor Correa, and that was it. There wasn't a specific line item. We had discussion, but it never made it to the budget book.
All right, so just my?
It is in our budget this year, though.
Just one council's opinion, I'm fine with you speaking on Fridays or however you decide to handle it, and Corporation Council coming, but I, I'm still in favor of that regardless of who is the Corporation Council for the city. In the past, as Consul in seat five said, it has been very political. There have been, I mean, the last Corporation Council, I don't think, agreed with us on anything. So I'm, I'm still in favor of that, if we want to have that discussion again.
Sure, it is, just so the council knows, it is in our budget. We have it in our expense line under city council expenses, and it's going to be up to the council on what direction you want to go and who you want to hire.
I just think it's something that we should set and, and use it if we need it and, and keep it going forward no matter who is Corporation Council.
And just to make it clear, the Corporation Council's the only authority that can bind the city. So whoever is in our representation, whoever that may be, it does not have any binding authority.
I yield, thank you.
Anything further?
That's fine.
Counselor in seat eight?
I would agree with Consul La Liberty. We have talked about it and talked about it and talked about it of getting our own legal person. I did read the emails from KP Law. I'm not giving somebody $275 an hour to sit here twice a week for as long as the meetings last. It's a little after 10 now. I'm not willing to do that. I think we have capable, competent attorneys right here in Fall River who has have, who have municipal experience as well, who could be the council, the council for the city council. And you wouldn't have to pay that amount, but you'd have somebody to sit here and give you those opinions. Any questions that we had that we wanted to ask, we could. So this is what I'm saying. We talk about doing things, and we got to go in a different direction and do things differently, but then we never take a bite of that apple and move on. So I agree with Consul Liberty. Let's look at how we're going to get somebody, and what's the fee that they're going to charge, a flat fee, and move from there. I can appreciate Attorney Rumsey being one of the first Corporation Councils that I've worked with that is non-political. He's not political at all. Everything that he gives, you know, you're talking about, there might be something with the park board. He wrote a whole, you know, a whole opinion on that, on a legal opinion of how, how he felt, how the law read to that. So I can appreciate that as well. And if you want to get somebody, I say, let's get somebody. I'll make a motion that we look into that, of hiring our own attorney.
We, we already have that in our budget. It's already been passed. There was a motion that was made to get an opinion, get a proposal from KP Law that was passed unanimously from this council, and that has been our placeholder for our budget going into next fiscal year.
We didn't vote for KP Law. We just did.
Absolutely not.
We just did.
Right. There was a motion not to retain the services of them, but it was to get a proposal from KP Law so that we could have a benchmark for a line item in our expense line. We did not approve KP Law, and, and it's going to be a decision made by this council as a whole, not just one person who's going to indicate what direction we go in.
Okay, well, put that on the agenda, and we'll move forward with it. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? Consul in seat one, Consul Kadine.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I had the opportunity to sit down and speak with Corporation Council and the mayor at my briefing, so I just felt that I had to say something because I've been the most vocal. So I don't want people at home to think that I'm, since he's down here, that I'm all of a sudden silent.
No, we know you went to Bishop's thing.
Yeah, right. So they teach us well over there. You know, from my standpoint, and I share this with, with council, I mean, when we were here approving his contract, there were statements that were made by counselors that they wanted Corporation Council as council president. I said that the representation was council was going to be here at meetings, that's why we had them. My concern, obviously, was that at requests, we haven't had anybody. I felt like it was disrespectful to the city council. We, we talked about that. I am fine as one counselor, and I said this, that as long as the mayor's office and Corporation Council is working with leadership, whether that be council president or council vice president, and they're working out the terms, and there's an agreement that Corporation Council is not going to be at our meetings, I'm fine with that, right? Unless we, there becomes issues going on and we never have Corporation Council here. That being said, I, I think in terms of, you know, when we start talking about expense and, you know, again, I'm not pushing for the KP Law piece. KP, KP Law was just a firm that represents municipalities. But, you know, the statement of $275, I mean, that's, that's a reasonable rate when you're getting 100 attorneys with various experience. It's just, it's a, it's a flat rate for a council. You know, the big issue is, is that we've got Corporation Council, we've got an Assistant Corporation Council, and we're talking about getting another outside counsel to be represented here. I mean, that's just another cost in itself. I do think it's, it's worthwhile for us to finally, as we've all stated, have our own counsel for the city council. And the reason for that is, is number one, I know that council can't bind the city. The only, the only council that can is Corporation Council, and I respect that. But it is good to have a second opinion when we need a second opinion. In the event we feel like we're not getting the right legal opinions or the determinations that we're looking for, that we can kind of then be rest assured that there is some consistency with what's coming down from Corporation Council. And we've seen it in the past. So whether it's, you know, a, a one-man firm or a one-woman firm versus a larger firm, you know, I think at the end of the day, it's, it's the city council. And, and what I represented to the mayor was that the council will make the decision. I, I don't want to be dictated as to who council is going to be by the administration, right? So if this is going to be a council for, for the city council, then we as a collective body need to make that determination as to who it's going to be. Good, bad, or indifferent, we may not all agree, but whoever it is, that's, that's just my take from, from the whole situation. And, and I agree with, you know, Counselor in seat seven, I, I think the letter itself, you know, it, it leaves a bad taste, and we, and we talked a little bit about that, right? It just becomes, you know, there's politics involved. It's, it's, we're never going to remove it. It's just an organic setting that we're in. We are a legislative body, you've got an administrative body. There's always going to be competing interests, there's always going to be egos at play, there's going to be conflicts, and I recognize that. I just, when we're going through a situation to really just come down with a letter, I think exacerbates it a little bit more just saying that, you know, it doesn't say it in ordinance, right? It doesn't do this. I, I think it's just a slap in the face of the council. Then you get members, me included, and I'm upfront, that feel like I have to defend the city council and the legislative body, right? It's, and I told this to Mayor Coogan. There are, there are meetings where I'm representing the administration and trying to advocate for the administration. So I work both sides, and, and I'm, I'm an equal opportunity supporter. I, I was going to go the opposite way, but we can say supporter. That's probably the most positive way to, to, to go with it. But, you know, I've, I've been, I've been harsh, harsh on administrations prior administrations, and I just got to be consistent. That's just who I am. So when I see something that's, that I don't appreciate and I feel is, is a misjustice to either branch, I'm, I'm just going to speak my mind on it. And I just think at this point, there was, and, and we had an open conversation. I, I think hopefully I've communicated and articulated my, my dissatisfaction with what transpired. And I, I think, you know, Corporation Council, to his credit, said, how can I improve, right? So my, my statement to him, and it's still the statement here, is have the conversations with council president. You know, if the council president makes a determination that you're not needed, then I'm fine with that. I, I'm good with it as one counselor. I don't know what the other counselors are looking for, but I, we, we, we vote on leadership for a reason. I think it's important and incumbent on them to be able to lead this council. I don't think he should be making nine telephone calls unless it's an absolute emergency. I think his, his correspondence should be funneled to council president, vice president, and then they kind of share the information with us as, as council president has done a phenomenal job on making sure that we're up to date on all these issues, right? Just, that's what I'm looking for. And I, I think, again, Cool Hand Luke must be the movie. I, I think it's a failure to communicate, so if we can, we can improve on that, that, that's fine. But regardless of what transpires, I, I agree with my colleague in seat four and, and seat eight that we do. I think it's time for us to get our own, our own council so that we have somebody that's, that's going to be here and prepared to answer any questions that we may have, whether it's, you know, expected or not expected. I just think it's, you know, it's, it's time for that. I mean, school committee has one, right?
Right.
They've got an attorney that's there every single meeting. We're dealing with a lot more legislative items, a lot more legal opinions and legal ramifications based on votes that we take that I think it just warrants and requires to have somebody here full-time. Well, I mean, at all the meetings, so.
And available to counselors.
Yes.
Yes. I yield. Thank you. Anything further? Here, Consul in seat seven, Consul Pelletier.
You know, you can go out and spend 300,000, 400,000, it all comes out to Mr. Rumsey that he's got the last say. So what do we do? Is we going to waste the money or not? And you can get the lawyers, and he's got the last say. Am I right?
That's correct. He can bind the city, the only one.
Only one, so is that a waste of money?
I don't think so.
We'll see. We'll have our budget deliberation soon.
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion. Motion to accept and place on file has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clark. Thank you, Attorney Rumsey.
Item number 14 is a street opening request for pavement less than five years old at 522 Buffington Street.
I'm going to be abstaining from this vote. Is there a motion? Is there a motion specifically?
Refer to public, uh, public works.
Motion to refer to public works, transportation. It's been made by Consul Akilby, seconded by Consul La Pereira, discussion. Roll call.
On referral to the Committee on Public Works and Transportation, Counselors Kadine?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Liberty LeBeau?
Abstain.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Abstain.
Motion to take items 16, 17, and 18. They're all leave to withdraw.
Second.
Motion to take items 16, 17, and 18 together has been made by Consul La Pereira, seconded by Consul Akilby, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to give item leave to withdraw. All items 16, 17, 18 has been made by Consul Akilby.
Second.
Seconded by Consul Dion, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on July 16th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Consul Kadine absent and not voting.
Is there a motion to adopt the emergency preamble?
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble.
Motion to adopt the emergency preamble has been made by Consul La Pereira, seconded by Consul Pelletier. Roll call.
On adoption of the emergency preamble, Counselors Kadine?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Liberty LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti.
Yes. Motion to pass through all readings.
Come here.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made by Consul Akilby, seconded by?
Second.
Consul Lee, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on July 16th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying ordinance be passed through first reading with Consul Kadine absent and not voting. This is miscellaneous traffic.
Is there a motion to pass?
Motion.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made by Consul La Pereira.
Second.
Seconded by Consul Lee, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on July 16th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is the EMT basic position.
Motion to pass through first reading would be appropriate?
Motion.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made by Consul La Pereira, seconded by?
Second.
Consul Lee, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on July 16th voted three ayes, two nays to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance be referred to the full council for action with Counselors Kadine and La Liberty LeBeau voting in the negative. These are the water and sewer rates.
Is there a motion to pass through first reading?
No.
Is there a motion?
Not for me.
No motion?
I'll make a motion to withdraw.
What was the motion out of committee again?
Three ayes, two nays. Madam Clark, could you reintroduce the item in committee?
Yes. The proposed ordinance on the water and sewer rates was to pass through, excuse me, to refer to full council for action with Counselors Kadine and La Liberty LeBeau voting in the negative. It was three ayes, two nays.
With action?
No recommendation.
I'm sorry.
No recommendation.
No recommendation.
It was with no recommendation?
Right. That's not what the committee report says, but, okay.
Motion to adopt the rates as, as submitted by?
Motion to pass through first reading to adopt the rates has been made by Consul Kadine. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Consul Vice President LeBeau. Their discussion. Any discussion?
Did you raise your hand, Consul in seat two?
Yeah, the only thing I want to clarify was, and, and, and the motion was made at that, at that ordinance meeting, and in reality, this really should have been sent to full council with a negative recommendation because on the vote for the increase, there were three nays and two ayes. I just wanted to clarify that and then set the record straight.
No problem. Thank you. Motion is before us to pass through first reading. Hearing no further discussion, to pass the proposed water and sewer rates through first reading has been made by Consul Kadine, seconded by Consul Vice President LeBeau. Roll call. Hearing no further discussion.
It would be for passage through first reading.
That's correct.
Counselors Kadine?
Yes.
Dion?
No.
Kilby?
No.
La Liberty LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.
President Ponti?
Yes.
She does not carry.
Consul in seat one.
We're just going to, we're, we're back in the same boat. We're down a member, and then we've, we've got a, a budget that's been passed. So I know we're going to have to make cuts, but I'll make another motion that we approve the rates as submitted by the administration and pass it through all readings.
That's the same thing.
It's a different motion.
It's a different, it's a different motion. Motion to pass through all readings. We would need to adopt an emergency preamble first. Is there a motion to, motion to, motion for an emergency preamble has been made by Consul Kadine. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Consul Vice President LeBeau, discussion. Consul in seat one, Consul Kadine.
Uh, just at the end of the day, we've, we've got budgets that are being put forth in the Water and Sewer Department. So if we're not going to do, pass these rates, then we're going to have to have some reductions. And again, we're already a quarter of the way through the year. So I just want to obviously highlight that. I think everybody understands that and respects that. But just try to give it some consideration that we're going to have to go through some, some cuts. So with, with that, I yield.
Consul in seat four, Consul Vice President LeBeau.
The meetings on the 24th, 25th, 26th, are any of those regular council meetings? Are we going to have items on the agenda or just?
One of them will need to be a full council meeting to take action on the budget. If we do so, are prepared to do so. On Wednesday, if not, Thursday would be available for us to do so.
So are we able to table until we have a full council?
We could. You can absolutely table the item if you'd like, yes.
Motion to table.
Motion to table has been made by Consul Vice President LeBeau. Is there a second?
Aye.
Seconded by Consul Akilby, discussion. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor?
No discussion on that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion is, item has been tabled.
We take item 23 and 24.
Point of clarification. Consul in seat one, you have a point of clarification.
What was the action of the council on the, the budgets, the enterprise funds? We referred it, were they adopted, approved, the appropriation orders are adopted, right?
That is correct.
So we're going to table, we, we already tabled, but we're, we're going to table the matter. And we've got budgets that were already, it's just a point of clarification. So I can't, we can't take any action on table, but.
Yep. A point of clarification.
So again, we approved the budget pending revenues, right? So this city council approved budgets, knowing that there are revenues that require increases, and it got adopted. That's all I'm saying. So to me, in my minds, logically, it doesn't make sense that we approved an expenditure order on all the enterprise funds, and we are now saying that we are not going to support the revenue that's needed for these, these items. And so now we're going to table it to a FY21 general fund budget discussion.
It's going to have to be an item on our agenda at full council with the budget.
Just one clarification that we approved the budgets already.
Yep, we did.
Okay. I yield.
There's really no discussion. Do you have a point of information, Counselor?
I just had a question.
Your question, Consul in seat four.
Do you know what that vote was on approving those budgets?
I don't.
Can you send it to us?
I can check. I'll check for you tomorrow.
Next order of business.
Items 23 and 24, both resolutions refer to Corporation Council.
Motion to take items 23 to 24 together has been made by Consul La Pereira, seconded by?
Second.
Second.
Councilor Kilby, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Motion to refer items twenty-three through twenty-four to cooperation council would be appropriate?
So moved.
Has been made by Councilor Kadeem, seconded by Councilor Dion, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Whereas the taxpayers of Fall River cannot be continuously relied upon to fund the increasing costs of needed services, and whereas in recent months, the COVID-nineteen pandemic has adversely impacted the ability of many local restaurants to maintain cash flow and remain a viable business in our city, and whereas assets owned by the city of Fall River such as buildings, vehicles, and vacant land can be utilized for advertising, and whereas this can be considered a new source of revenue to help enhance city services, and whereas this will not cost the city or its taxpayers any money, now therefore be it resolved that the administration be invited to a future meeting of the City Council Committee on Finance to discuss the possibility of utilizing city-owned assets for the use of advertising in an effort to increase revenues at no cost to the city, and be it further resolved that the administration discuss any previous action, documentation, and/or decisions relative to the use of said assets for advertising purposes.
Is there a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Dion, discussion is one of the sponsors of the resolution, Councilor in seat two, Councilor Dion.
Yeah, I co-sponsored this, um, resolution with President Ponti. Um, again, and I, I've said it multiple times, and I'll continue to say it, that any avenue we can go down to attempt to create revenue, I will definitely walk down that road. I would rather try and fail than not try. Um, the more revenue that we can create as, uh, then the less money we have to take out of the taxpayers' pockets, and, and that, that's just the route I'd like to take. And I believe that, um, I know that not everybody's in favor of the digital billboards, which was a big part of the discussion last time, but it doesn't mean that if we do go down the road of billboards that they have to be digital either. Um, but again, any revenue, any, any revenue source, um, I think is worth looking at, with that I yield.
Counselor in seat five, Councilor Lee.
Yeah, um, I also, many, a handful of times have asked about the, um, the digital billboards as well. Something that was presented to us prior to me being elected, and I recall it kinda just fell by the wayside as far as, you know, where, where it was going, and, and maybe part of that is based on the fact that we don't have, um, you know, a city administrator that's on, kind of on top of all these different meetings that come down the line, um, but it would be, it would be nice to see, um, a different type of revenue come through. Obviously, I think we all know that every dollar matters here, um, when it comes to taxpayers and it comes to paying for things in the city. So, um, I'd like to, I'd like to see that, uh, you know, back on the table, I'd like to see more discussion and some, you know, some community involvement on, as to, you know, what we can do to, to bring revenue to the table that's outside of the tax base, or that's outside of putting a burden on the taxpayers, so that I yield.
Thank you, anything further? Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Whereas relief to the taxpayer and the operating budget of the city of Fall River is a number one priority, and whereas the fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two budgets will be extremely challenging in terms of budgetary requirements and funding, and whereas solid waste disposal and the handling of recyclables has become increasingly more expensive, and whereas solid waste and recycling represents a significant impact on the operating budget and taxpayer funding of said budget, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance discuss and review the costs associated with the disposal of solid waste, recyclables, and yard waste, and be it further resolved that the Committee on Finance discuss and review solid waste and recycling compliance with city ordinance, and be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation to further review and action, for further review and action after discussion in the Committee on Finance.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Kilby, seconded by Council Vice President LeBeau, discussion sponsor of the resolution, Councilor in seat two, Councilor Dion.
Yeah, again, we've had a little bit of this discussion earlier tonight, but, um, as I've said all along, I believe that there are areas that we can, um, address within our solid waste, um, division, and it's not necessarily anybody, a failure on anybody's part, but we clearly have, um, a couple of items in the easy disposal contract that actually violate city ordinance. Um, we have recyclables being picked up that shouldn't be being picked up, we have perhaps, um, the administration tonight, and Mr. Perry stated that they're looking into, you know, our five, six family units business, they're, they're looking into different aspects and, and perhaps gonna bring it down to this council. Um, again, I just think that anytime we can create revenue or streamline something that's gonna save tax dollars, that I wanna go down that avenue, with that I yield.
Councilor in seat four, Council Vice President LeBeau.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I, um, spoke to Counselor in seat two at length, and I would just wanted to commend her for the amount of work that she has put into this. Um, when it comes in front of the Committee on Finance, I think, um, everybody will be surprised, not only at the, uh, amount of work that she has put in, but in everything that she has found out because of all that she has done, so I'm looking forward to that discussion. Deal.
Well said, thank you, Counselor, anything further? Hearing none. Uh, motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. President?
Councilor in seat one.
Through you, can I, can I request that we go back to priority matters number one?
Uh, the item that was referred to council?
Mm-hmm. Finance? Yes, I will allow a discussion, I, uh, going back to item one, to propose FY twenty-one municipal budget.
Thank you, I mean, it's still a gender item, I mean?
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
I understand.
Right, so we made a motion to refer it to council, but it's still there, so I appreciate it. Um, in terms of the fiscal year twenty-one budget, my concern is, is that, um, the council had just taken a vote to table an item with regards to the rates. I've, I just got a question for the administration. We have a budget that's been in place for two months, um, or a month and a half. We've, as a council, because of our inabilities to make a decision, are creating a structural deficit in this account, and if folks do not understand the detriment that that puts the city in, um, it's a little concerning. So, my question is, number one, we've, we've approved two one-month budgets leading into, oh, actually, no, we approved, we approved the budget, so we approved, we approved the enterprise funds without the subsequent revenue. So how are we planning on, because there's not a single counselor that's in, opposed to these rates that have suggested an alternative to the revenues or reductions, so we've got a budget that's unbalanced, and, and, and we're allowing a structural deficit to take place on a daily basis, so when do we tell the Water Department, the Sewer Department to stop, shut down, or come up with a way before we continue to run a deficit? So I make a motion to waive the rules to have that conversation?
Motion to waive the rules has been made by Councilor Kadeem.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Pelletier, discussion, hearing none. Discussion on the motion to waive the rules? Has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion to waive the rules passes, I know Mr. Ferlin is on his way back. I've heard.
Yes, he's on his way back, that's correct.
Thing, I'm just, I'm just concerned, I mean, you've got, you've got employees, you've got equipment, you've got a lean budget that's going on, that you've already probably purchased some of this material, so when we get to the point that we get our act straight and we figure out what we're gonna do in terms of revenue, the cuts are gonna be more devastating than what, than what we were talking about two months ago.
You're, you're a hundred, you're a hundred percent correct, Counselor, and, you know, I haven't, I haven't studied it to be prepared this evening, but we don't have vacant positions like we have in the municipal budget, so we've got salary and personnel issues. We have contracts that we already have in place to maintain the wastewater treatment plan. We, we have debt service that you all have approved on varying occasions to include most recently, the next phase of the water project. At this particular point, um, it would be significant cuts because you are correct, we are two months into, um, spending based on the budget that was approved in June.
So what's, what's the game plan going forward? That, that's my question, I mean, we, we either make a, make a suggestion to put a spending freeze immediately, tell the Water Department or the Sewer Department to legitimately shut down because you've got payroll going on?
Which is a serious issue.
Right, I mean, that there's?
There's some serious consequences.
I don't, I don't want any counselors to take offense to what I'm saying because I, I respect their differing opinions, but at some point, we can't continue to kick this can down the road and say that we're just gonna be at a stalemate every single time that we address this in full council, right? So, we either come up with a plan to get this budget balanced, um, or we shut down the Water and Sewer Departments, because we can't continue to allow it to, to go on because it's gonna be so devastating that we're not gonna be able to, um, operate the department anyway.
Counselor, I think it's, I mean, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Look, I know Mr. Ferlin is on his way back, I, I, I will allow the discussion to take place at the end of the agenda, when Mr. Ferlin's back, so we can have an honest discussion about this.
I just think, I just think it's not to cut you off, Mr. President, I think it's important that we have these conversations tonight. You know, I, I understand the issues we're tabled.
I think you can have the meeting, when you do the first meeting, you can have this brought up, it was tabled, you can have a council meeting, when you do the budget, have it tabled, you'll have.
So, so the counselor in seat eight is suggesting that we go another through, two weeks, expending payroll and all these expenditures?
You'll have a full council then and you'll vote on it.
There are a couple of vacant positions, if I look at it quickly. There, it looks like there's two in the Water Department and one or two in the Sewer Department, but not significant positions.
Not enough to cover the?
This was before us to pass, there was a motion made to pass through all readings, motion?
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about that, so I'm not looking to take any action, what I wanna get out of this conversation is, what's the game plan? Like, what are we, what are we legitimately gonna do? I know we can't take a vote on it because we've already tabled it.
We have, right.
But under, under item number one, we can talk about the FY twenty-one budget, and that is the FY twenty-one budget. So, we're in a situation where we've got a budget approved, we need to, in my mind, before we leave this meeting tonight, have a game plan as to how we are gonna address it. Is, are we telling the administration to go back and come back at the next meeting with cuts? Then we need to say that. We can't leave the administration hanging and then saying we're not gonna do anything. Or are we gonna say that we're gonna look for new revenues? What revenues do we wanna look at? But we need to have these conversations now, it's just?
I respect that.
Fiscally, it's fiscally irresponsible for us to continue to go down this road, that's, that's all I'm saying. And the longer we go, the, the worse the cuts are gonna be.
I agree.
Call an emergency meeting?
Was this, that's right. Call an emergency meeting, we'll have all nine counselors here.
I, I'm going to allow the discussion to continue.
This was referred to finance.
Counselor.
It doesn't, it's still, it's still, it's still?
It was referred to finance, and you wanna bring it up again. Come on.
Where are we gonna go? So you wanna have an emergency meeting?
Absolutely.
All right, so Counselor in seat eight is making a recommendation that we lay people off? Or we shut down the department, that's, that's her statement right there. Okay, because if we're not, if, if, emergency, how, we, we're in a meeting now, so we don't, if we think it's an emergency? If, if we think it's an emergency, right? This is a matter for an emergency meeting, we're in the meeting now, let's have the discussion now with the emergency, let's, let's get a handle on it.
We, we, we've already, obviously, as everybody knows, we've already have a discussion, uh, votes already been given on that item to table it, but for the purposes of discussion on the financial aspect going into the next, the budget, Mr. Ferlin, can you please elaborate to Counselor Kadeem's question on the increase, uh, and the devastation that this will have? A, and B, what is the, what is the next plan, should the city council remain at a stalemate regarding this item?
Yeah, so currently, um, as you know, a budget has been approved, a, an appropriation for spending. We have put into place, uh, yearly contracts for chemicals, um, and other yearly contracts that we do for both water and sewer. The, overall, uh, we've been through what the cuts, if the rate increases, if the rates aren't increased, that means we need to go back and reduce the budget. Essentially, we need to go to DOR, they're not gonna certify that the, that the rates support the budget, and they're gonna make us reduce the, reduce the budget itself. What the reduction of that budget means? And excuse me, 'cause I just ran back over here. It's a, it's a total loss, um, within the sewer. I'm just trying to get my, um, of nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Uh, that was, if the rates were approved, uh, i- if there was no rate increase and the budget stayed, the rate stayed the same, based on the budget for the Sewer Department, we would've had to cut the budget nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Since we're already a month and a half into the budget, and we've had the appropriation to be able to spend the funding, um, for salary line items, for chemical line items, for other line items throughout the budget, that reduction would have to be even greater to make up the gap for the balance of the year.
And it's gonna be even greater if you're laying people off, 'cause now you're at a, you're at a body and a half to lay people off to cover unemployment.
Yes.
Right, so?
Exactly.
Okay, so we're, we're at least a million plus, right? 'Cause you're gonna, by the time we even address this with all these emergency meetings that we're not gonna have, we're, we're gonna be, twenty-five percent of our budget's gonna be expended, if not more, because you've already probably expended a good portion of your, at least your material, right?
Yep, correct.
So that, that's uploaded upfront, so, I mean, percentage-wise, I don't know if you're thirty, forty percent. So, so we, we may be well above the one point, uh, point, whatever it is, I don't know how many points you wanna put out there, but?
You know, our budget is very, uh, different than a lot of other ones, we have a lot of, uh, upfront costs in the beginning of the year that's paid out for our debt service, uh, a lot of SRF funding gets paid out upfront in the beginning of the year, those are fixed costs, those would have to be paid anyways, but, uh, I believe, uh, Sewer, we've already paid out about five million out of our budget for debt service, and, uh, about four million, or three, three and a half for water has already been paid out in debt service.
If, if you don't mind, Mr. Ferlin, the total expenditures in the Sewer Department, to put it in perspective, is twenty-three million, eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, ten million, one hundred and sixty-three is debt service.
Correct.
So, we're really not talking about a very large budget in the first place, it's all debt service, which this council has voted the projects.
Right, so you're taking ten million dollars off the table?
Yep.
Plus whatever you've already paid in salaries, that's off the table.
Correct.
Right, so you're down to half of the budget to make cuts moving forward.
Correct.
Okay, so if nobody sees the urgency in this, this matter, that's fine. From, from my standpoint, at the next council meeting, can you please, at least once and for all, so that we can actually rectify this, this situation with all our inconsistencies that we have as a city council? Because that's exactly what we do. My frustration, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, as a city council, we are doing a disservice to the city. One minute, we have this, this department come down, I make a suggestion that we need to be fiscally responsible, and we need to add money to the stabilization account. We throw a hundred thousand dollars, it has the majority support of the city council. Okay? The very next meeting, after we go through it, it gets, it gets rejected in, in ordinance committee, comes back out and doesn't have the support. Okay, and we had the full conversation about what the rate increases were gonna look like and all this other stuff, so, listen.
And we also approved the bonds that had?
The same meeting, the same meeting.
Same meeting.
Five million dollars, four million dollars, whatever, whatever the case may be.
That was unanimous from the council that increased the rates.
Yep. In the final budget that was approved by the council was the revised budget with the additional hundred thousand dollars for stabilization as well.
So, can you, can you please, 'cause we can't take action, 'cause the rates have been tabled, so there's no way to, to rectify the situation tonight, can you please have a real scenario as to how we're gonna make up the deficit without any rate increases? And then, good, bad, or indifferent, at the next council meeting, the city council has to take a vote, one way or the other, up or down, we're either increasing rates or we're coming up with a different scenario, and I would, I would urge you to do your due diligence to make every attempt possible to minimize the rate increases, right? So, please don't, because there's, there's gonna be discussions, and, and to the, to the counselors who truly feel like there shouldn't be any rate increases, you owe it to them to make sure that you've do, you've done your due diligence to find all the cost savings, which I think you folks have already done anyways, but really try to, to find some cost that is, is not just gonna be, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna tug on the, on the hot strings, like, like when we're on, like days on the school committee, the first thing to go were, were sports and, you know, we're gonna have fees for this, and, and that's when you get everybody out saying, oh, you can't do that, and, and that's how we get things approved, so all I'm asking is that you do your due diligence. I know the best scenario is probably to see the rate increases, 'cause that, that really provides the, the services, the level services that we're, we have in those departments, but do your due diligence to try to minimize the devastation in terms of the cuts that are gonna be there, and, and really try to think outside of the box to become creative with, with ways that we can actually get this budget back into balance. That's, that's my only? That's, that's my only request and I, and I just ask, like, council members to be prepared, one way or the other, to, to have this discussion and actually take a vote, I mean, we've gotta figure something out and, and I would, I would urge, if you're not in support of the rate increases, then make a motion to suggest how we get to that point and let's just vote on that, to see if we can get a consensus, one way or the other, what we wanna see in terms of revenue. I, I know we don't have a whole lot of say in that, but I, I think those are the, that's the only direction we're gonna get to you folks without getting to a situation, cuz you, you get to the Department of Revenue, the DOR's not coming down until December, November, December to start looking at our, our recap, so that's the first time they're gonna be looking at that. There's no indication to the Department of Revenue that we've got issues, so, so we're not even on their radar, so they're not gonna be looking at this, so now we're six months in, so we're more than fifty percent already expended at that point, so.
No, it's definitely, definitely an issue, you know, so the, the million dollars that we spoke about was, was just on the sewer end. There was another five hundred on the water as well, that that would've been in deficit, so now you're up to probably six, six fifty within that one. You know, and I appreciate your comments about talking, about cutting everything that we can. If you look through the expense line items, again, and I've explained this to the council, if you look through, the majority of our expenses were cut, you know, the bottom line of our expenses. There were, you know, cuts within our capital, you know, cost to what we needed for this year. You know, there's, there's not, there's not, you know, there's not extra money in there. It's, it's cutting, it's gonna be cutting the essentials of what the department needs to run. You know, as you said, we have our fixed costs, we have to pay our electric bill, we have to pay our debt service that's been approved by the council. We have to pay for all of chemicals to treat the water, you know, those are things, fixed costs that we have to pay for, you know. We can't run without sodium micromicroly, we can't run the water treatment plant, you know, it's, it's not safe, so we have to pay those bills. And it's very minimal of what's left. You look at the fixed costs within these budgets, in water, you're talking about seventy-seven percent of that budget is a fixed cost. On sewer, you're talking about ninety-two percent of that budget is fixed cost. So, you have very few spots that you can cut from.
Listen, you're preaching to the choir, you know, so, I've tried to, to make that argument, you know, it, it falls on deaf ears, but, you know, the other piece, if you can, you know, this is something, can, can you pass along a message to the mayor, right? My frustration is there's a lack of urgency surrounding this, right? And, and that, this needs to come from the mayor, the mayor should be having conversations with councilors. You know, he has his debriefings, right, he has his, his briefings and, and conversations and that should be a topic of conversation for every single city, city councillor to say, how do I get your support for this budget, what do we do? Give me thoughts, give me recommendations. The fact that we're in mid-August and we have not rectified this situation is a very scary thought, right? Because the, the alt, you just laid it out, I mean, our only options are gonna be devastating and I don't think any of us intend for that to take place, but we need to start getting some type of guidance and, and direction as to which, where we're going. And, and again, no fault that, of you folks at the, at the table, but it seems like we're here every single time talking about these things and it just goes around and around, but hopefully, you know, everybody understands the urgency, that's, that's gotta be dealt with at the next meeting hopefully, so, with that I yield.
Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. We all as councilors took an oath to make sure that we run the city right. And, nobody likes to raise rates. And sometimes we just gotta do it, I mean, we don't wanna be in a position that they would send, if we can't keep up, they send somebody down from Boston to say, hey, you want, you guys don't wanna do it, we're, we're gonna come in, we're gonna have you do it, and that's the way it goes. But, to, to change the mind and say, we're not gonna raise the water and sewer rate, it's, it's crazy. We're putting the city in, in a, it could be a disaster, for sure. If we don't raise the rate, they could come down from Boston, the Water Board, the, what do you call it?
Yeah, so DEP is the, is the governing agency that oversees the, oversees the water treatment and distribution systems. Again, you know, if we had to make drastic cuts to the water budget, a lot of it would be labor, a lot of it, you know, that's one of the non-fixed costs within the budget. The, you know, we would tell them, you know, I would have to tell them as a licensed operator, that we're running at unsafe levels. You know, again, we went through this, you know, we talked about this before, and the water department, we were cutting a total of twelve people. Ah, excuse me, fourteen people from the water department.
Yeah.
That's treatment, that's distribution, that's administration. That's the people that operate the treatment plant and provide the safe drinking water twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That's the people that respond to the water main breaks out in the system at two in the morning on December twenty-third, it's zero degrees out. You know, those are the people that do that. If we don't have those people, and again, those, those departments are running very light on personnel, like a lot of departments around the city are. You know, but, we're maintaining, we run a safe plant, we run a safe distribution system. If we start cutting staff, it's not gonna be safe.
Well, you know, you got the men to do it, and if we start cutting, we're gonna get outside help to fix up the problem.
Yep.
And I think, we, we talked about this last time and, and, you know, I guess people don't, don't remember what we could face. And I think a couple of days after we talked about that, you had a break.
Yep.
And you send your men out.
Yep.
And, and you, whether it costs thirty grand and you said it would probably cost more than that, would it private?
Yeah, no, we had, we had a large break after one of our last city council meetings, it was down on Central Street, right underneath the Bragger Bridge in front of the carousel. It was a twelve-inch main, the guys were out there from, from, I believe it was about five at night, or maybe four, that the main break came in. They were out there till four the next morning. We were battling the tide coming in, we were battling the, you know, the old valves within our system to get a shutdown, so multiple things. If we had to bring in a contractor to work that amount of time and make that repair, it would've been, you know, the cost, at my estimate, would've been about forty to forty-five thousand dollars. The cost for our staff to make that repair was a lot less.
Well, you know, we gotta keep everything in-house, I mean, we have, we gotta do it, I mean, if you don't wanna do it, well, you know, it, we gotta pay the consequences, you know. We lose the labor, we lose, e- even the, we, we, four and a half million, five million, we approve for new water lines and everything else. And what do you do with that? We've been doing that for nineteen years, it's crazy to, to stop now. And, and, and the people gotta understand, that's all, we have a job to do, this is what we have to do, to maintain the service to the people of Fort River. You wanna go Dixie, then you're gonna have to pay the fiddler. They're gonna come in and, and bypass you, I guess, right, and say, listen, oh no, you can't do this. We're gonna take over, we're gonna impose the mount, the water rate and the sewer rate, and you people are gonna have to abide by it. And I think it does cost more money on top of that, cuz these people are coming in, right?
Yep.
And, and that's it, that's the bottom line, we already went through this, the budget's all set with this. And to change it right now is absolutely crazy. I ain't saying my councilors are crazy, but it's just, you know, the way it goes. So, to me, I think we're making a mistake if we do this, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna make sure the water and sewer rates stay just the way they are for them reasons, and that's it, and, and people are still gonna complain, oh, Councilor Pelletier done this or this, all in good. It wasn't for me, if it was the residents of the city of Fort River, and they're gonna understand the consequences of what is going on. This is what we're gonna do, and if it don't work out, well, then good. Nail me to the cross, whatever you wanna do, who's right and who's wrong, we all got an opinion. But we already went through this, budget's all set, I thought we were all set, never thought we're gonna come back to this, absolutely. Even you, you left, you were all set. And then you had to come back, you, you make the sign of the cross, I gotta go back.
I was preparing for the next time.
You know, so I just don't want the ship to sink, stay above water, do what we have to do. And all the other problems we're having in the city, the COVID nineteen and everything else, and these people here, they're gonna lose their businesses and everything else. This is more problems for them as well, so, it's, to me, we have to do it. But, that's the way I'm gonna go, and that's it, but I better be in the city of Fort River.
Mr. President, I, I'd like to make a motion. You know, Mr. Ferlin was so compelling and I think Counselor in seat seven was, was very compelling that I, I've gotta reconsider my vote to table, so I'm making a motion that I reconsider the vote to table the rates.
Motion, motion to reconsider, the table has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. This is a motion to reconsider the, the, the vote in the rate increase that has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Hearing no further discussion on that item, roll call.
This is a motion not to table, correct?
This is a motion to reconsider, yep.
Reconsider the table.
On the motion, Counselor Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
No.
Philby?
Yes.
Alibi LeBeau?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham? Pelletier?
Oh, yes.
Pereira?
No.
President Ponte?
Yes.
Motion to reconsider passes, is there a motion?
Uh, motion to adopt the rates as presented.
Second.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made by Counselor Kadim, passing the proposed water and sewer rates has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Is there any discussion on the item, Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee?
I, I just think that we know what the cuts are at this point. We, I, I hate the fact that there are cuts to this, I don't like the fact that I have, you know, Mary Sahadi, Mr. Ferlin telling me that every single year we're gonna have to raise everything, every single year, don't like it. It's, I have a vo, I have a, a choice to choose yes or no, I feel like I've been voting no to water rates like a hundred times now. It is what it is, I don't wanna see the cuts, but this is what has to come, because we're not, we're not looking, the, the councilors that are voting no are just simply not looking to raise the rates on the taxpayer this, this time around. And we'll take the cuts as it is, I think that's what it really comes down to, if anyone disagrees with me, any of the no voters are disagreeing with me on that, they can, they can vocalize that, but I think, at this point, we just have to accept that there's gonna be cuts here in this situation and, and go forward with that. Obviously, it doesn't make me smile to do that, you know, we've talked multiple times on it, but, you know, there's gonna be cuts, as, as Counselor in seat one said, first sentence was, there's gonna be cuts. I feel like this is just the direction we're gonna go with this right now, with that I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Ferlin, how many individuals are gonna be possibly laid off?
So, within the water department, the, all the capital would be cut, so it's a total of fourteen individuals from the water department, seven, seven of them from water maintenance. That's the staff that go, goes out and repairs the main leaks, repairs the service leaks, repairs the sidewalks and roadways after, after those incidents. Three from the reservation staff, that staff out there is a total of four people, we would be down to one person in the reservation. Wouldn't be able to respond to any incidents, you know, we'd, he'd primarily be maintaining emergencies out within the reservation area of over forty-five hundred acres of watershed land that protects our northward top of the drinking water supply to the city. You would have two staff from the water treatment plant, those are the, those are the people that maintain the plant, that keep the plant running. So those two staff would be cut, eh, cut, and then we would have two staff from the water administration office. So, in the water administration office, we'd look to possibly go to biannually billing, cuz we may not be able to do quarterly billing anymore. Billings would potentially be less accurate because the reduction in staff, MLCs for closings would take longer. So, water department would have a total of fourteen staff members laid off.
And I might wanna add to that, that was when we calculated this initially, so we're two months into the fiscal year, so it more likely than not will be more than fourteen individuals, the total water department staff is.
Fifty-two.
So that's a significant.
So you said fourteen, I'm sorry, fourteen, is that the number?
Total fourteen from the water department, yes.
Now, just a point of information, I know somebody had, had the floor, I think it was.
Oh, I yield, thank you.
I, I thought somebody had the floor, but, just for clarification, is that fourteen taken into account where we currently stand now?
No, that, again.
So that's fourteen, so I've, I've gotta time, times one and a half on that to, to get, so you're talking about twenty-one people.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, potentially more, yes.
And does that twenty-one people, that layoff of twenty-one people, did that get you to the, cut the deficit that we're operating with?
Uh, that would, that would probably bring us up to the deficit, yes, that we're currently operating in. Again, you know, and, and we talk about these as cuts, you know, I think about them as a water and wastewater operator as the safety of the people that are getting this drinking water. You know, being able to provide safe drinking water to a community of this size.
So we're not Flint, Michigan?
No, currently we're not, luckily. We have a good drinking water supply, we have a good treatment plant, we have a good distribution system. Do they all need maintenance? As anything that runs three hundred and sixty-five days a year, they do. You know, so, to keep a safe drinking water supply running out to our hundred-plus customers, a hundred thousand-plus customers, is definitely a task that takes individuals to run that system. So that's on the water side. On the sewer, within the sewer budget, we'd be cutting all capital cost again. We'd be laying off four staff members from the sewer division office, there is a total of, there's a total of six staff members in that office. Funded from that office, so. We would be laying off eighteen staff members through contract negotiations with Veolia, and again, these are all numbers that were, if we started this July one. So that would be over eighteen staff members from Veolia, a contract operator of the wastewater treatment.
So altogether, in the sewer department, how many people would you be laying off? Did you say eighteen?
Twenty-two total.
Twenty-two, okay.
Correct.
So fourteen plus and twenty-two plus in sewer.
Correct.
Okay.
Just a point of, point of information, it's technically twenty-one, cuz you gotta add the time and a half, I mean, time and a half, one point five. Technically, it should be probably one point six, but we'll, we'll say a half-body for each one person you lay off, and so I'm assuming that would be the same thing for the twenty-two you just mentioned.
Correct.
So we got another eleven that we've gotta get, so thirty-three. So we're talking about roughly fifty-four individuals.
Yep, and that's operating a grade-seven wastewater treatment plant that feeds into Mon Hope Bay. Seventeen CSO facilities, twelve remote pump stations throughout the city. Two hundred and eighty-five miles of sewer mains and about seventy miles of stormwater system throughout the whole entire city. Again, the wastewater treatment plant is a twenty-four seven operation. We have operators that are on duty, three, three per shift. If you've ever been to the wastewater treatment plant, it's a very large expansive plant. Our plant typically runs about twenty-two million gallons a day. If we get a rainstorm anytime throughout the day or at night, we can be over one hundred million gallons per day feeding through that plant. Plus then also our two remote CSO facilities on President Ave and on Cove Street are activated, and those need to be manned at the same time as well.
And then the half, half a billion dollar project that was put forth at the ballot as well, right? That still hasn't even come into play yet.
Correct.
Right.
So we're still dealing with our CSO abatement, which is a federally court-ordered mandate. That's what they went to court, CLF, years ago. We're currently in discussions with CLF and EPA. We're currently in, uh, discussions with the CLF and EPA to, uh, to do an amendment to that court order. Um, you know, if I told EPA, which is the regulatory agency over the Sewer Division, that I had to make these cuts to my department, we can guarantee that they would be down here within ACO very, very quickly. Currently, they think we're understaffed to operate our facilities and our CSOs at our current staffing plan that we have.
What was, what was my, uh, motion?
Your motion was to pass through first reading.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna withdraw that, I wanna actually, uh, emergency preamble. The rate, the rates as provided by the administration.
Motion to, uh, adopt an emergency preamble has been made by Counselor Kadim, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Vice President LeBeau, roll call, on the emergency preamble.
Mr. President, I, I just wanna make sure what we're doing here with the votes and the motions, that we're, we're making them appropriately.
Yes, they're, they're...
Okay, so the initial, uh, I, I supported the, uh, Counselor Kadim's turn to reconsider.
Yep.
Now, I'm thinking whether that was an appropriate vote, because you were on the...
That was a unanimous vote.
You were on the minority side.
That was not unanimous.
Well, just clarify that for me, please, I just wanna make sure...
Madam Clerk, can you...
No, it was unanimous, I, I didn't vote, no.
'Cause I'm being honest with you, this is the most compelling, um, I don't wanna be rude to you, but Sean Kadim is doing your job. I remember we were in a Zoom, well, I'm sorry, Mary, but this is the most convincing argument for me, hearing why these rates should be increased. And I'm not saying I'm flip-flopping, but Sean, I must say, Counselor Kadim, I've never heard a compelling argument like this. With all due respect to you, I remember a Zoom meeting, uh, we had, and we were talking about the, these rates, and you were asked directly by one of our counselors if you supported this. And your comment was, "Well, I'll support it if the administration supports it, I'll support it." And then, Miss, I got a pretty good memory, and then Mr. Sahadi looked at you and said, she looked at you funny. Say, "Well, yeah, we do support it." So, you know, um, and why'd you leave the meeting? This vote didn't even come up yet, you were already out the door.
No, he, he left after the vote, he left after, he left after the vote.
I left after this vote.
Well, I, I...
I, I do apologize if I knew.
We've been here late, so I appreciate his comments in terms of giving you direction to make sure you give us a compelling argument in terms of why these rates should be increased, 'cause that's what the, the people wanna hear, because the majority, many of us on this city council are hearing from our constituents every single day, that we shouldn't raise the rates. Every single day, I run into people, that, that, you know, clients, uh, homeowners, people at the post office. So we, we, we are under a lot of pressure as well to make the right decision, and our decisions are based on how much of a compelling argument that you give, just like an attorney in court listens to, the judge will listen to the, those, those arguments. So I just wanna make sure all the procedural votes we made are, are appropriate at this point.
That is correct.
Okay.
Counselor...
I yield.
Counselor in Seat Eight?
You know, I can understand a lot of what Sean said, I can understand what Mr. Furlan said. But I'm gonna tell you what my frustration is. My frustration is that you got the Water Department that buys land all over the city. I asked for a list of all the land that's owned by the Water Department, they don't even have it. They bought pieces of property because people built homes and there was flooding issues. Well, why is the Water Department signing off and Sewer Department signing off on building permits when then the Water Department has to go and put in new pipes? Where does that money come from? The taxpayers' pockets, that don't live in those homes, that weren't the developers on it. And they're seeing that. People are seeing that, and they're frustrated with it. You know, another piece of property on Pier Street, that, no, we can't sell that, we can't sell this one, we can't sell that. It's like the kingdom of the Water Department with land. That's crazy. Then they get Dave's Beach, you're gonna love this, they get Dave's Beach...
Thank you.
And they have a rowing company there. Great concept for rowing on the Watuppa, beautiful concept. But you people last year signed a lease that they're paying us two-thousand dollars a month. There was never an RFP done, and I think it's a good program. Now, it's been dropped to twelve-hundred, you never got that lease back. The rowing company can go right to the water, but we wanna put picnic benches on the rest of the land there, and we're told, "No, we can't go to the water, we have to stay twenty-five feet away." What? Then, there's a water easement and a sewer easement on a woman's property. They go in and they wanna, she wants to know where she can put a fence. Somebody goes up from the Building Department, she can put up a fence to here, and then she's gotta put a chain. Okay, then the next day, we gotta call, "Mr. Furlan didn't want the chain there." You know what the ironic part is? The woman doesn't even have it on her deed that she has any easement there. She could've put up whatever she wanted, didn't have to ask the city anything. Are you kidding me? So then I have, um, Mr. Hathaway say, "Well, here's the plan that SciTech did when this house was built." I don't care what you have on those plans, it's what's on the deed. It's what's on the deed, the easement needs to be on the deed. Those are the things that frustrate me. I have those places on Hyacinth Street and Pier Street in Real Estate Committee, sell them. What did we spend on Hyacinth Street? Half a million, a million dollars? Okay, so how much is this increase gonna be? About a million dollars? I rest my case, Attorney Kilby. I get it, we're in a jam, but you know what? They always come up, and, "Oh, if we can't, this one gets laid off, this one gets laid off, this..." Well, then learn how to save money, 'cause that's what the taxpayers want. I don't care how you vote, I am not changing my vote. With that, I yield.
So just a couple of comments on that. Pier Street, so Pier Street, we bought for seventy, seventy-seven thousand, I believe, between closing costs and everything like that. That's saving us right now from doing a seven-million-dollar drainage project within that area.
Right, because of the, because of the True Sail Clinic expanding? Why, why all of a sudden was that a flooding problem?
That has been a flooding problem from, for years. We have letters from the neighbors that have lived in that neighborhood for over forty years that that area has flooded.
The neighbors that I spoke to said that it got worse when they did the expansion of the medical facilities. People signed off on that.
Yep.
And that's saving you money, because obviously, too many people were...
It's saving us money by not having to do the...
Too many people built there. We cannot have people building in areas where there's problems with water. And I don't know who's signing off on them, Mr. Furlan, but they shouldn't be signing off on them.
Yep, so those, the majority of those communities were built up forty, fifty years ago. Uh, the Pier Street area, the Hyacinth Street area, um, again...
Hyacinth Street was not forty, fifty years ago, because that was old woods when I moved there.
The twenty-seven acres of drainage area from Eastern Avenue all the way down to those two low points of the drainage spot, so there's a twenty-seven-acre drainage area to the north, a twenty-five-acre drainage area to the south. Both of those, those houses in those upper drainage areas were built up down along at the very bottom of Hyacinth Street.
And it was off of Phillips Street, and in that whole area there where people built on wetlands, and then all up in the Hyacinth Street area, believe me, I know when things were built because I've lived in that area since I was thirteen. So I've been there more than forty years, honey, I gotta tell you that.
Correct, with...
I just think, even to say, "Oh, we bought that and it's saving us money." You spent seventy-seven thousand buying it.
Yep.
Buying it. So come on.
And those, those are projects that come from capital authorizations that are approved by this council.
That's correct.
I didn't vote, I wasn't here to vote on Hyacinth Street, because I want you to sell it.
I, I wanna just, before I recognize my colleague in Seat One, I, I'll recognize my colleague in Seat One first, Counselor Kadim.
Um, okay. So I, I just wanted to speak to the administration, right? So I, I think, I'm not sure where the votes are, you know, I, I think we should probably just move the questions so we can start getting through this, 'cause it is kinda late. However, um, I just hope you take note of the fact that the council has zero appetite in terms of raising the rates. So even if it does go through this year, I recommend, 'cause at the end of the day, we shouldn't be here in, you know, August, or even in May or June, talking about rate increases, right? I think we need to have these conversations a little bit earlier on. And I know it's difficult, because you're, you're trying to build the budget, but if we're gonna have fruitful conversations and start talking about how we're gonna minimize the rate increases, then I think these things need to take place. And I hope if, if this does go through, um, that right after the FY twenty-one budget, you folks are back down here talking to this council as to what it is that we can do, get information from people, let's, let's have a working committee to, to figure out how we can move forward with everything that we've got, all the debt schedule that we have. What are some of the options that we might have? Um, creative thinking in terms of revenue, so that we can start targeting that, and we're not waiting till the last minute to, to get this done. That's just my only take with, with that. I don't know if you're gonna add anything, but I just don't wanna move the question before something.
Yeah, I, I just wanna make one last comment, and then we can vote on this. I, I think sometimes when, when we're tasked to make some decisions in this, in this council, in this community, uh, being leaders and being leadership isn't something that is easy for any of us to do. And it involves making some tough decisions. I've been fortunate enough, as many of you also have, that sometimes you have to make tough decisions. I'm willing to make a tough decision as a counselor, to make sure that the residents in our community, when they turn the showers on in their homes, that they have adequate water supply, that's not brown, that's not different colors, because let me tell you something. This community was in an uproar about purple bags at a ten-dollar fee. If you don't think for one second this council would be packed with people, because when they turn their water on in their home, it's brown, will be an issue, it will be. If you mean to tell me that resi- uh, business owners who own restaurants or diners, or any kind of restaurant, or any kind of business, a bar or anything, can't turn their water on to serve their customers because their water is brown, or we can't respond to a water leak on, uh, uh, in, on January first, like we had in the beginning of the year, we are gonna be called to the table for that. So I, I believe that, is it challenging for us to acknowledge the fact that we need to make a tough decision on this rate increase? Yes. But it is gonna be up to us to hold this administration accountable now and next year, to make sure that they are doing what is right for their community, and it's up to us as counselors to make sure that we hold them accountable for that. So I'm just telling you the position that I've maintained, while it is hard for me to see increases of twenty dollars or so a year on water bills, or, or how, how much was it, Mr. Furlan, quickly?
Uh, twenty-three ninety on the average household bill.
Twenty-three dollars, while that is, that is concerning to me, and it is something that I consider, as all of us do, we have a responsibility to make sure that we supply services to this community. And supplying services to the community is water and sewer, 'cause I don't know how any household could live without it, quite frankly. So, um, hearing no further discussion, Counselor in Seat Seven, Counselor Pelletier?
Thank you. Without raising the rates, uh, you know, we don't want them to come down from Boston. If this goes down, how long before they come down and say, "Listen, you gotta do this, you gotta raise the rates, you can't give it all up?" Is that what happens?
Yeah, so, you know, um, after the first vote tonight, I would have to, you know, I know the matter was tabled, but I, I gotta, I would have to start to cut my losses, I'd, you know, start to figure out what a budget would look like uh, this far into the year, or that far into the year, um, if the rates weren't approved. Uh, at that point, you know, it, it's contacting DEP and EPA. You know, again, we're in multiple conversations, um, you know, I just received a letter about something from the EPA, uh, just, uh, two days ago, uh, actually, last Thursday, um, you know, regarding a matter that we're discussing. There would be, have to be something that I would have to explain to them, what's, what's going on down here. You know, I would expect that they would take it very seriously. You know, this safe drinking water, um, the cleanliness of the water that we put out into Mon Hope Bay. You know, that's what matters to them, that's, that's what they're looking at, that's what they do. You know, if we're gonna be impacting the environment, impacting the health and safety of our residents, you know, they're there to protect, to make sure that we don't do that. They have multiple different ways to do that, consent orders, decree orders, there's multiple different ways that they can come down and order us to do stuff, you know? So I would expect that they would act very swiftly.
You know, I lived in the era of the time that dirty water was coming in.
Yep.
Um, once a month, twice a month, it come in, and four, five, six people, dirty water, dirty water. What are you gonna do? Flush it, they flush it, that's it, and then we started fixing the lines up. We also had a problem, uh, down a sewer treatment plant, because the smells and the odors, and we had to live with that as well. I mean, uh, are we gonna go back to that? I don't think we should. But I'll tell you right now, if, uh, if this don't go true, uh, I, I think we're, we're in trouble, because we wanna have the grass of us doing what we have to do, rather doing what they want you to do. And you're gonna pay more, uh, water and sewer rate than you're paying now. Come on.
Without a doubt.
That's what you gotta think about. We're here, we got a vote, it's a tough vote, let it go. They're gonna come down, they're gonna come down. If they come down, what's your position? What are you gonna be doing?
Me, I would, I would have to open up the books to them, uh, show them all of our plants and our operations. Uh, you know, they're semi-familiar with them, but, uh, then I would have to work with them on a recovery budget.
Well, this is crazy.
Recovery rates.
You know, I'm not the smartest guy here, but, you know, to me, it's just common sense, that's the way we should do it. We don't need nobody coming down dictating to us what we're gonna do because we don't wanna raise the, the water rate. And then we're already one and a half months into the budget, and wow, talk about, what are we doing now? Come on, come on, let, let's try to do the right thing, you know? And with that, I yield, I ain't gonna say anymore about it, I'm a little upset about it. What are you gonna do? And, uh, they're gonna pay, they're gonna pay if they come down. That's the whole thing. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor...
You name the topic, you name the topic, you bring the subject, it's always the right thing to raise the rates. That's, that's what we're always, every single time, it's not a tough decision. If someone tells you, "Every single year, we're gonna have to raise the rates," it becomes an easy decision if that's all you're gonna do is raise the rates. And, and I get it, I, I mean, it's gonna be every single year. So if, if we're gonna raise the rates this year, then you might as well just ask to raise the rates every single year, because that's exactly what has been said multiple times here. Um, so there's never an opportunity to say no, it's always gonna be gloom and doom, no matter what we do, no matter what we say. It's always gonna be compelling to raise. It's always gonna be a compelling story to raise. And it's not a story, and I get it, 'cause it's gonna happen. But I think that we, I mean, I think that right now, we're in a position where we're gonna see a tax raise, we're gonna see rates, you know, being requested to go up every single year. I think that we, I think we, we have to say no every once in a while. I just think that the taxpayer needs a break from it. They're gonna still pay a fee, right? There, there's still fees that are gonna be paid, it's not, we're not saying no to a fee completely, we're just saying no to a raising the fee, right?
To the increase of the fee that supports the budget.
Right, so there's already, there, taxpayers already, um, they're gonna pay already, but they're just, we're just voting to not pay more on top.
For the rate payers, yes.
For the rate payers.
Right, for the rate payers.
But with that in mind, the rate payers voted for the hundred-and-twenty-eight-million-dollar project.
Mm-hmm.
That went to the rate payers, so they need to understand that that hundred-and-twenty-eight million dollars needs to be repaid and therefore will be...
The wastewater.
Some cost to them for both water and sewer.
Yep, and that was, that was a reprimand vote.
Yep.
Correct.
Same thing with the Water Department authorization, authorizations that are approved for twenty years running.
And maybe when they vote on this, maybe there should be a stipulation that they gotta know that they're gonna have to raise rates every single year, you know, in order to do that. I don't know. But they have the option to say no, they, and there's a lot of people that are, I, and, and I think, and with that's gonna come the cuts, you know?
For years, you look back, and there was times where there was no rate increases, then you see large rate increases.
To make up for it, right.
To make up for those no, no increases. You know, this year, is it a small rate increase? No, it's not the small, is it anywhere close to the large increases that we saw when there wasn't increases? No. You know, again, it's, uh, you know, it is an increase. Any increase to any rate payer or taxpayer is an increase, you know, everybody feels it. Um, and that is, that is understandable, you know? Uh, all of us live in the city, we, we all feel it as well, you know? Um, so it's not something that we wanna do, but to be able to provide, you know, the safe drinking water to, to the customers, be able to keep a clean environment and a clean bay, um, for, uh, people to be able to enjoy. You know, there is a cost to that, you know, and that cost, you know, again...
But the cost keeps going up.
The cost, again, as, as...
Right.
As long as we keep on needing to do additional projects to maintain our stuff or improve our systems and fall within federal guidelines and state guidelines, yes, it, there's a project, there would be an increase related to that project. You know, every year within the water authorizations that have come down to the council and been approved by this council, uh, attached to it is also a sheet showing what the rate increase, what the rate impact is gonna be for that loan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as, for the, at least in the past five, five years, I know for a fact that it's come down, prior to that, I'm not, uh, sure. Um, again, the hundred and...
And I think a lot of people, when they vote for these things, they vote thinking that their tax dollars are already covering, you know, many of the costs. They don't realize that they have to raise their water rates every single year in existence in order to pay for some of these things.
Yeah, correct. And a lot of people don't think, you know, they think, well, they're getting money from the taxes and they're getting money from the rates. Water and Sewer Department do not get any money from the taxes. We only get money from our rates. There's no money that comes to us from taxes. We pay indirect costs back to the city for services that the city provides. So we actually give money back to the general fund for services that the general fund provides to us. So, you know, it's not that, you know, we get money, you know, taxes are going up and rates are going up. You know, we're getting double the amount of increase.
They seem to go up every year.
That's not the case. We only get what our rates go up.
Okay, thank you.
You have a question?
There's a motion to pass through the emergency preamble that has been made and seconded. Roll call.
Adoption of the emergency preamble, Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Valibri LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.
President Ponti?
Yes. So a motion to pass through all readings would be appropriate.
So moved.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made by Counselor Kadeem.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, hearing none. Roll call.
Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Valibri LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
Peckham?
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
The motion carries, Mr. President.
Next item on the agenda. Before we...
Can I make another motion? A motion that we have the administration come back down to this council in September to begin discussions about fiscal year '22 and how to potentially maintain the rates at the current FY '21 rates.
Madam Clerk, a motion has been made by Counselor Kadeem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, we can make a calendar reminder. That'd be great. If we can, counsel, I'd like to see if we could get our Corporation Council, as well as the individuals here for the park board, or the park commissioners. Can we take item 47 out of order, please?
Motion to me.
A motion to take items 47 out of order has been made by Counselor Kilby. Seconded by Counselor Deion. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor? The ayes have it. Didn't hear any ayes, but I think they all raised their hand. Item 47 before the council is the mayor's request confirming the following appointments of Amber Burns to the park board and Joseph DeSilva to the board of park commissioners.
Motion to confirm both appointments?
Motion to confirm the appointments.
Does it, has to be lifted from the table?
Yes.
Yep, that's right.
Motion to lift from the table with a negative...
Motion to lift the item from the table has been made by Counselor Deion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion?
Motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm the appointment has been made by Counselor Kilby. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion, Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deion.
Yeah, I have a little bit of an issue with this. I did have a discussion earlier. Let me get to my page. So, we had, and this has nothing to do with the people that are trying, that the mayor wants to appoint. This has to do with the people that were removed, should they have been removed. So I'm gonna read the case law that supports them being removed, and it states the mayor... This was a former, this was in Springfield, Mass. Let me give some background here. Where a park commissioner was removed, somebody else was appointed. The park commissioner took it to court, saying that the mayor didn't have the right to remove them. And this was the opinion given by the judge in the case. So the first thing I'm gonna point to is the mayor acted under, in general law, 43, 52, section 52 or 54, which are part of Springfield's Plan A Charter. That charter was adopted by the city to be effective on the first Monday of January 1962. It superseded the Charter of 1852. My contention is that we have a home rule charter, not a Plan A charter. And even if this was referring to Plan A form of government, which we do have, my second issue with this is Mass. General Law states, "The mayor of a city may, with the approval of the city council, appoint a board of park commissioners for said city consisting of five persons who shall hold office for terms of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 years respectively, from the first Monday in May, next following such appointment, or until their successors are qualified. And thereafter, the mayor shall annually, before the first Monday in May, with like approval, appoint one such commissioner for a term of five years from said first Monday in May." My understanding is the people that were removed from this board, their letters were dated June 22nd, which clearly is after the first Monday in May. And also, in this case law and in this decision, it states the mayor of Springfield... I'm just gonna, let me put my glasses on. I'm not gonna read the whole paragraph. So anyways, the park board of commissioners and the mayor's appointment to that post, the removal and appointment occurred on March 15th, which was clearly before the first Monday in May. So basically, based on that, I am not gonna support these appointments. And again, nothing to do with the people being appointed, just that I feel it's inconsistent. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further?
We have...
Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
We have the Corporation Council here, who's vetted all of this.
Let's waive the rules, have them come down, and we're here late enough, why not? Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counselor Pereira. Seconded by Counselor Lee. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor? The ayes have it. Attorney Ramsey, welcome back. You wanna elaborate a little bit on this item?
Sure, be glad to. Counselor Deion, as we discussed a little before, the May timeframe in there is, it can be confusing. So it's completely understandable. But I think not all timeframes are as pertinent as others. So, for example, you know, if you're talking about a budget that has to be done by a certain timeframe, clearly that timeframe is relevant and important. I think what happens here is sometimes the statutes are trying to provide a guidance. So, for example, the way this thing was intended to be set up is that the initial appointment of the first five park board members, when the park board just began, is that they would get 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 terms. So that every May, one, in theory, would come up. And then from that point on, it would be a five-year appointment, okay? So that's, in theory, how it should be set up. The problem, of course, is, you know, what if a park board member resigns? Or what if one is removed by the mayor, or any other number of scenarios? So this whole May timeframe, I think, is really there more... In reality, what happens is, I think, sometimes the board members, and I know this from personal experience, their term expires and they don't realize it. Sometimes their clerk's office doesn't pick up on the fact that somebody has, you know, that they've signed the entry, and that timeframe has expired. So they remain on the board, even though their term is technically expired. I think the May timeframe is a way for people to remember, hey, it's May. Let's review the park board membership. But the reality is, park board members come and go, and we can't really have them only come and go in May. I guess another example would be, you know, imagine if you had a board membership that has paid members, hypothetically, of course. But if you have a paid member and that board is essentially not doing anything, they haven't met in years, would you wanna wait until May to remove that person? Or continue paying them for the next X number of months until May hits? So it is a guideline. The mayor's office, I know, is intent on trying to get the park board back to how it was originally set up, how it was intended to be set up. But I think the May guideline can be pretty much, I wouldn't say ignored, but is irrelevant in this situation.
I know also that in that section of Mass. General Law, it also states that if a park board member's position was vacated, say, somebody resigned, somebody moved out of town, if they move out of the city, they certainly can't serve on any board, then the mayor could appoint somebody to replace them, but it would only be for the remainder of their term. So there are guidelines as to vacancies, and obviously, there will be vacancies from time to time.
No, I understand. It's a valid point. Vacancies do occur all the time. So what the intent to do now is to get the park board back to where it was. I don't know exactly the terms, but it's supposed to be set up so that every May, one is exposed to expire, so that the mayor's office can either reappoint or get somebody new in there.
Because I guess, too, my other issue all along has been the fact that we haven't, through in ordinance, we have not been in compliance with Mass. General Law for 34 years.
And in 2000... Seven versus five, is that what you're referring to?
I'm talking about in city ordinance, we, yes, right. The ordinance said we could have seven members on a park board, and we could only have five.
Correct.
It was never initially set up correctly. It wasn't set up with five members of 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5-year terms. And it's been out of, it just hasn't complied with Mass. General Law for 34 years. And in 2008, the ordinance was redone, and again, it was redone incorrectly. So it's consistently been incorrect and in violation of Mass. General Law for the last 34 years. So, again, so from my perspective, that just adds another whole dimension to the whole thing, that we've just done things consistently incorrectly.
Can't disagree with you on that.
And with that, I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? There's a motion to confirm that has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none. Roll call on the motion to confirm both appointments.
On confirmation of Amber Burns and Joseph DeSilva to the board of park commissioners, Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Deion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Valibri LeBeau?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
No.
Motion carries.
What's the vote?
The motion carries.
The motion carries. Next order of business.
Whereas the former city council has questioned budgetary items, policies, and practices, and has expressed an interest in conducting performance reviews. Whereas state auditor Suzanne Bump's office has the ability to conduct reviews of financial policies, practices, and budgets of city departments designated by the city council. Whereas it would seem appropriate to request the employee health insurance and solid waste division be two areas in which such an audit would be beneficial. Now therefore be resolved that the city council, along with Mayor Paul Coogan, request any and all policies, practices, and financial review assistance that the state auditor and the state auditor's office can provide.
So a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt is made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
Just that I have reached out, had discussion with the mayor on it. I also had discussion with my state rep from my area, Carol Fiola. Suzanne Bump is on board, the auditor is on board, to help and come down and look at those two departments in the city, because I think they're where we spend a lot of money, where there's some major issues. And if they do it, and it's not gonna be a financial burden to the city to do it, but she does need, she did need something from the council, a resolution from the council, and the signature of the mayor. So with that, I yield.
Motion to adopt has been made, Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deion.
Yeah, I think in terms of the solid waste division account, I think there's a, I mean, we have something in ordinance on Thursday, no, it's not this week on the trash. But we're gonna be referring to finance, a discussion on trash. I think we have plenty to go over that, we don't, I don't know that we necessarily need that audit. But I think I'm actually getting to a point. We have my colleague in seat eight, who thinks that we need to have an audit of the health insurance and solid waste divisions. My colleague in seat one has talked about performance audits. At one time, the administration said they were going to be sending down performance audits. I don't know how many departments overall that people are going to want to examine, but I've kind of gotten the impression, and I could be wrong, that it's a fair number of departments and accounts. And I'm starting to feel at this point like I would be inclined to make a motion to finally, once and for all, get down to the nitty-gritty, examine everything thoroughly, and make a motion to do a forensic audit.
Is that a motion to, to...
This is on the table if she wants to make another motion after.
Yeah, well, the item that's before us is to adopt the, I'm sorry, guys, I'm tired. The resolution that's before us, if you wanna make another motion afterwards, we could do that.
Okay.
So that we don't confuse the motion. The motion to adopt, hearing no further discussion on the motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Opposed.
Counselor in seat two, opposed. You wanna make another motion, Counselor?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we do, that the city undergo a forensic audit. I don't know, maybe you need to refine it, but...
If you, I mean, do you wanna, there's a lot there, Counselor. So if you want to perhaps file a resolution for there to be discussion about that, I think that might be safer, because there might be a, if there is a mechanism, funding, you know, let's clean it up, let's do it organized. If you wanna do that, I would respectfully request that you do that.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Next order of business.
Have citations.
Motion to adopt the citations has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
An order granting permission to Tanyos Barbor, doing business as Barbor Auto Sales, for license to operate an auto repair shop at 673 Bedford Street.
Motion to license.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Items 30 through 32 are orders scheduling hearings.
Motion to take items 30 through 32 together has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by...
I'm gonna make a motion to table, because I tried to call the city planner to see why these were done. If anybody went by these streets, I don't know why we'd be accepting them.
All three of them, Counselor?
All three of them.
Motion to table items 31, I'm sorry, 30, 31, and 32 has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Deion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have minutes of the planning board.
Motion to accept the planning board minutes has been made by Counselor Deion, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Take items 35 and 36, and 37, 35 and 36 together would be appropriate. Has been made by Counselor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Deion. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to approve items 35 and 36, public hearing July 14th and regular city council meeting July 14th. Has been made by Counselor Deion, seconded by Council Vice President LeBeau. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a communication from Senator Roddicks regarding use of funding from the CARES Act.
Motion to accept and place sign file has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Do we take items 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, and 43?
We have to refer the...
There's some items that need to be referred, so item 38. Item 38.
Oh, 38.
Item 38 is a communication from Stone Mandia LLC with regard to an application for solicitor's permit.
It'd be appropriate to refer that to Corporation Council. Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We can take items 39 and 40 together. That has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to accept items 39 through 40 together has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Items 41 through 42 is the open meeting law complaints by Colin Dias. Both items.
Most referred to Corporation Council.
Motion to take items 41 through 42 together has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Deion. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to refer the items 41 and 42 to Corporation Council has been made by Counselor Deion, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a response from the Assistant Corporation Council to a previous open meeting law complaint.
We can take items 43, 44, and 45 together if it's the will of the council.
Motion.
Motion to take items 43 through 45 together has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. seconded by Counselor Kadeem. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to accept items forty-three through forty-five together has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to lift forty-six from the table.
Second.
Um
Motion to adopt.
Um, hold on one second here.
To approve forty-six.
So the planning board recommendation for acceptance, um
Linwood Street.
This is being held in finance, Madam Clerk?
This was, um, the finance discussion was a result of this originally, which is why this was tabled. So I don't know if the council wishes to move this forward without having that discussion.
I'll move it forward.
Motion to, motion to approve, uh, we got to lift the item from the table. Motion to lift the item from the table has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Deion to lift the item from the table. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion for action? Motion to approve, Counselor Pereira, is that what I heard?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by
Second.
Counselor Deion. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call. On acceptance of Linwood Street extending from Mario Boulevard.
Mr. President, this would actually be for the, um, on the order recommending the plans from the city engineer. This is not accepting
It's not accepting.
The plans from the city engineer.
Let's clarify the motion again, Madam Clerk, one more time.
This, this is the order recommending that the engineer prepare plans for the acceptance of Linwood Street.
Prepare plans, it's not accepting the street.
This would still need a formal public hearing and everything going.
That's right.
Noted. Motion has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Deion. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have a, a drain layer application on behalf of J.D.Q. Excavating.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Deion. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, we have one item that the council members need to sign.
What is that?
Two-minute recess for signatures. Is now back in order. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good night. Thank you for your patience.
Good night.
Thank you, Mr. President.